She was. Her truck was still there.
This is the end for Puerto Ricans.
Oh, really?
So I'm very hopeful.
Oh, okay, okay. Do you want to ask?
Hey. It's not bad. I just shouted to Tammy.
He wants to say, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, with the pants coming down with the bra.
People tell me I look like I'm on a bowling team.
It's reality, right? Beauty of artwork.
Okay.
There she is. Interesting board.
All right. No problem.
Get some good things from there.
Thank you, Erica. All right. Is everyone on that? We're, we don't have anyone virtual today. Call a roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Here.
Councilman, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman Best.
Present.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Here.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
There is a quorum present.
Thank you. All rise, please, for the invocation by Councilwoman Bravo.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support. As we begin this meeting, help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect our community, and continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these themes in your name, amen.
Amen.
All join us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, welcome, everyone, to our council meeting for April 25th. It's nice to see everyone in the audience and those of us, those that are joining us virtually, welcome. We have awards or presentations tonight, so we will move to open forum, and we have two persons signed up for open forum. The first one is Kayleen Diaz. Hi, come on up. You go right here to the podium. And see if you can.
Microphone?
Hi, my name is Kayden. I'm 10 years old, and me and my friend are going to talk to you about plastic pollution. So the earth is filling with plastic waste, so we need to do something. Plastic pollution is one of the worst environmental issues on earth. It has, plastic has a serious impact on both animals and plants. For example, if a sea turtle spots a plastic bag, and mistakes the plastic bag for a jellyfish, it eats it along with all those toxins, and it dies. All this because in the 1950s, plastic producers chose cheap plastic instead of using slightly more expensive eco-friendly biodegradable materials. What can we do about it? We can tell other people, put it on social media, like info about it, we can, we can visit classes like Miami Springs Elementary. There's a lot of things we can do, and so, yeah.
Like an awareness campaign?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Kaylin.
Wow.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And now we have our next person on public forum is Alyssa Trujillo.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Trujillo. I'm 11 years old. I care about the.
Can you speak a little? Or put the microphone down so we can.
I care about the environment or planet and our community. Plastics are not biodegradable. It's a threat to the environment, animals, and humans. Plastic spreads toxins which appear in our food and water. To keep our community clean and people and animals healthy, plastics and styrofoams need to be eliminated. Plastic and styrofoam affects global warming, which affects the whole world, including our community. Five trillion plastic bags are produced a year. 14 million tons of plastic and styrofoam trash end up in the ocean every year. Over 1 million marine animals are killed each year because of plastics. Please reduce or take away any one-time use plastic and styrofoam from our community. Plastic waste is engulfing our environment. It is one of the most important environmental issues affecting us today.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Alyssa. Okay, so that concludes public forum. Is there anyone on virtually?
No.
Public forum. Okay, so the next agenda item is approval of the minutes.
Through the chair, motion to move six A.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? I do have some items, Erica, and I can get with you later. I noticed just when we talk about that I recognized the Women's Club Little Library, the carpenter's name is Katie.
Wardenski.
Dinsky, and we have it as Emily, something else, so we need to correct that, and also that it's a little library is in front of the Women's Club, so I'll correct that with you later, if that's all right.
With the mayor's observations, motion to move the minutes.
All right, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Best.
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We have no reports from boards or commissions tonight and no public hearings, so we'll move to the consent agenda.
Yes, we have a 9A. This is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, approving the purchase of an electronic key management system for the city's police department from Markon International, Inc., doing business as Key Keeper Systems, in an amount not to exceed $14,189.94, providing for authorization, providing for effective date. Would you like me to read all of them?
Yes, actually, I should have asked first, is there anyone that wants to pull out any one item for comment?
No, not at all.
Do you want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we move the consent agenda.
Yes, okay, and the only thing, I guess, the comment I had is on E, that it seems like we came in way under what we anticipated for painting the, the community center, which is wonderful.
But you did 80,000.
80,000, but I saw the other, the other quote, bids were substantially in the hundred thousands and stuff, so that's great.
Excellent.
Okay.
With, with the mayor's concerns, motion to move the consent agenda.
Okay, do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
Second.
First and a second.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Best.
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Easy peasy.
Okay, um, the next agenda item is old business.
10A is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, encouraging residents and individuals using or renting public facilities and businesses to use environmentally friendly or reusable alternatives to single-use plastics and expanded poly, poly styrene food service articles, provided for authorization, provided for implementation, provided for transmission, and provided for an effective date. You pack it, you have a memo myself that I wanted to read into the record. The purpose of this resolution is to encourage residents and businesses to make a conscious effort to conserve resources and reduce the use of single-use plastics and styrofoam. Once passed, the city administration will take the following actions in order to achieve the objectives of this resolution. A, staff will work with the ecology board at their next meeting in order to develop a public awareness campaign, as well as a framework to recognize those businesses in the city that have embraced this effort and are taking the steps necessary to reduce the use of these articles with environmentally friendly alternatives. B, the city's procurement department will include provisions related to environmentally sustainable practices in all future procurements. C, staff will add language in city rental agreements, which encourages residents and individuals renting park facilities or other public facilities to reduce the use of and replace single-use plastic and styrofoam food service articles with reusable or environmentally friendly alternatives whenever possible. And D, all city departments, whenever possible, will no longer order single-use plastics or styrofoam products for use in their facilities or city events. We will also discourage the use of single-use water bottles at city facilities and events, and we will advise employees to bring their own reusable drink vessels. The senior meals delivered to our adult community center will be exempt from this due to contractual obligations at this time.
Um, through the chair, if I might, before I make a motion, which I intend to, but, uh, girls, thanks so much for what you said about that tonight. That really caught me. And here, here we are voting on something that you guys spoke about. That's pretty good. I spoke to the assistant manager before coming to the, into the meeting tonight, into chambers, and I said, you know, it, it starts at home, and I don't think you've seen me for the last five meetings using a plastic styrene thing. I said, how about the coffee bar in City Hall? And she goes, that's going away. So hats off to you, and a motion to move the item, mayor.
Hey, any discussion? I would just like if the council agrees is to tweak something on the title to put businesses before, in the title of the resolution, I think it's worded a little bit that businesses after renting public facilities, and I would like to move that forward and not, I can work with that with the city attorney if that's okay, but.
Yep.
Wonderful, thank you, and, and I wanted to thank again the homeschool, these are homeschool students that are here voicing their concerns, and so you can see how things work. Our city is, this resolution is our intent to be more environmentally sustainable and environmentally responsible across the board, and it starts like Councilman Best said with us here at the city. Thank you so much. Okay, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Best.
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Through the chair. So you guys are coming to another meeting when we have a very contentious issue, and it passes that quickly, right? Thanks, girls.
Okay, so we move to agenda item 10B, discussion of mural regulations.
Mayor and council, at last, at the last council meeting, we talked about a framework for mural regulations, and the council gave me direction to come up with a framework, which I've shared with you. So we're sort of, we're, we're in about three buckets, and the buckets that we have for this evening are whether you want to proceed with an ordinance regulating murals, which is the framework that we talked about at the last meeting, whether you want to move in a different direction and prohibit murals, or if you want to go a third route, which is that of a government speech program. And so what you have, what I've shared with you is the framework that we discussed last time, which was authorizing an ordinance regulating murals, and you have that in front of you. Again, this is not first reading of the ordinance, this was just a draft ordinance so that you could get your hands around what that would look like if you were to permit murals.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
May I have a point of privilege? Just like say something before we get into.
Said before you went, before Heidi finishes her.
Oh, I'm not sure.
I thought you had a question for Heidi.
No, 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 I do not. No, no, I, I think that, um, my hope for the night is that, uh, we've had quite a few discussions around this issue, going back months and over the last couple of meetings, and I think, and, and we discussed last time, getting input from people, right, and I know we've all done it in one way or the other, and I think it really boils down to this. Do we want to have murals? Yes or no? Right? And if we want to have murals, we have to regulate it, and if we don't want to have murals, we need to say something in writing. Right, that's, it just boils down to that. Our council has worked very hard on a couple of different ordinances, you know, based on conversations that we've had, but I think it really boils down to this. Because if we are going to have murals, then we have a framework to move forward. If we're not going to have murals, then we have to come up with a framework to move forward. But I think that that's really the crux of the issue here before us tonight, seems to me. And the last time, we had a framework, but then it took us two hours to get to the framework, and I think that, I don't know about you, but I'm ready to move, you know, one way or the other on this, but that's, that's really the framework of what we got tonight.
Through the, through the chair, if I might, Heidi, were you done?
I, I think, I, I think Councilman Vasquez sort of.
Kind of set everything that you wanted to.
Yeah, you have those two, you have that direction.
I, I, for one, as, as one of the five sitting up here, have the thought that this needs to be a hybrid approach. I totally agree with what my colleague just said relative to yea or nay, and we, we have to move forward on that. I think we're beyond that already, quite frankly. But the hybrid approach would be certainly with what our esteemed counselor said at the, at the last meeting, that we discussed this, and that would be that be careful where you tread because of First Amendment rights and all of this and that. I think that's paramount. I think that's something that we need to certainly keep in mind. You can't tell somebody what they can say in content, but in substance, in substance, you can though. And certain, I've, I've looked at, since we've met last and discussed this, my, my, my good colleagues, I've read probably 27 of the 34 municipalities' regulations relative to this in Miami-Dade County. Most do not have anything that speaks to this, so we're, we're treading on like virgin ground here in a way. Carl Gables does, this one does, Beach does, that, that does, but several don't. And I think what we have to think about here is enliken Miami Springs as a city of 14,000, 15,000 people to other municipalities that mirror us, that are, that are close to us, and conduct their business, you know, economically, socially, residential, commercial, if you will, the way we do. We are unique. I think all of us know that. We are unique in the fact that we are 80, 78, William, correct me? 78, 80, 20, residential, commercial in this town-ish? And, and, and that's, that's, that's big in a way. Now, as you can see in chambers tonight, if you want to consider this a contentious issue, there's nobody here. I think it's a contentious issue myself. But apparently the people don't, or they'd be here. Those that are here, and I'm sure all of you throughout the week, throughout the last two, three weeks, have probably received emails on, on, on your government iPad, et cetera, talk to folks, stuff, relative to this, and you get people's opinions on it. But here we are about to make a decision on this, and there's no one here. I find that deplorable, quite frankly. But nonetheless, we have business to do. That's, that's how we represent people to conduct business. I think that the hybrid approach to this, as I mentioned initially, is the way to go to protect the First Amendment rights and to in some way derive something that makes sense relative to percentage. I, I, Heidi, I saw on your thing where you indicated X in the, in the box kind of thing on two or three different occasions in your presentations that you've, that you've given to us all, and, and, and we can always come up with something like that, but Councilman Vasquez is absolutely correct in suggesting that everything is superfluous if we don't go yea or nay on whether we want to proceed with either having them or not. My thought, mayor, is that, is that we should pursue it. I think it's a, it's a wonderful art form if properly regulated. And, uh, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Best, Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilwoman.
Was Vasquez gonna speak, or?
Uh, no, I was thanking Councilman Vasquez for his comments before, and now yours.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and council, I'm sorry, there's a resident who approached me who appears to want to make public comment on this item. I don't, I know public comment is closed, but.
No, that's fine.
I just wanted to let the council know.
My good friend. Not, we haven't talked about this at all.
No, no.
That surprised me that she's here.
First of all, I wanted to say goodnight, and I want to address to your shame. I'm ashamed too, because I was not prepared for that. There is one thing about Miami Springs, we trust you. Miami Springs residents only get, you know, when is something that they don't trust what's going to be the result. We trust your good sense.
Excuse me, Ms. Banjimber, can you state your name, so that's the rest of the council, I think we started without.
I'm terrible about politics. My name is Carmen Spengenberg. I'm a resident at Quail Avenue 1131, and I'm an artist and a teacher, and.
And a member of the Women's Club.
Et cetera, and Women's Club, and et cetera. I'm not prepared. I really don't. I pay attention. I knew there was commenting in his newspaper, but I trust like everybody else, that would not be an issue. Let me point through things so I don't waste your time. Number one, think about the places where they have, you know, the finals, the, the, the art in the walls. They are different communities. What is the problem with art in the, in the walls? Because as you state, everybody has the freedom to do the way they want it, and that's when you get the big problem. Miami Springs is such a conservative type, you know, neat residential area that personally, we don't expect to see this. Those areas that thrive on this kind of art in public place in the buildings are places where they wanted to bring the tourists. And look what happened to the community when that happened. You can see, think about the places that used that, named the well-known walls of Wynwood. People go there, lots of tourists. It's beautiful. I would not want to live there. Think about tourists in Miami Beach. Wow, beautiful for the community. Get Miami Beach, be art deco. Think about the residents. They're not happy with the direction that goes. So as a resident, I would be very much against it, and if I know it's going to be voted today, I have one voice. But if you wanted to do something, talk to the residents, send a inquest, because I'm quite sure nobody wants that kind of publicity, because it's not going to be the art that you choose. You go to the adult center, it's the most beautiful artwork. But remember, it went several artists, send it to a community, the community vote, shows, and that's what we have. There were other artists. The, the art was not bad, but the one that you chose was the perfect one for the place. The moment you open for somebody else to choose, you lose, and we will lose.
Thank you, Ms. Banjimber.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to, since we allowed one? I'm, Carol, come on up. And normally, if you want to speak, you have to be here at seven, before seven, and sign up at the podium, okay? But.
My name is Carol Gordon. I agree totally with her. Art means different things to different people, and you're opening up a can of worms, as far as I'm concerned. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol, and she's also a Women's Club member, by coincidence.
Yes, yes, she is.
This world is just full of.
I know. Good thoughts, right?
All right, so Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes, I was gonna get into discussion with this, and I, I, I don't believe that you need a, a packed room to make a conscious decision. This is being proactive instead of reactive. So, I mean, I, I also did my homework, and I looked into other cities. The city of Coral Gables has a really nice program where it's actually controlled, it's, you know, it's content controlled because it's, it's murals to promote the beautifulness of the city. It's not anybody's specific ideas or ideologies. I mean, we want to promote art and its beauty. We don't want to start making our small community more divided than what it is. I'm going to be straightforward with that. Art is supposed to bring people together, so if we can come up with something of a public arts space program that's funded by the city and selected by a city where we can actually control, I'd be in favor for that. But for now, I'm gonna make a motion for a no mural ordinance. That, that's where I stand right now. But again, if you want to look into a public art program that the city supports and is funded by us, I'd be for that. I'm not against murals. I'm against art that can hurt people and, or have distaste, or, you know, children walking by and not something that I want my child to see. And I agree with Carmen that this is a very family-conservative neighborhood, and I don't mean conservative in your party. I mean conservative in the way that you have your lifestyle. And I am not for, for the artsy, or not even, I mean, I just, I'm playing it safe, and, and that's where I stand on, on this matter.
Okay, and you made a motion?
I made a motion of a no mural ordinance.
Okay.
And I also have here, I was looking at the resolution.
A minute, because you made a motion, so let's see if there's a second.
And the motion is, is really to prohibit, to directing our office to draft an ordinance prohibiting murals. Correct. If it's not that we're going another route.
If there's no second right now, that doesn't mean you can't present it later when we continue the discussion, because perhaps there's others that want to mull this over. Okay? All right, so that motion dies, right? There's no. There's no second right now. Again, it doesn't mean you can't present it later. We're just early in the discussion. Um, is there anyone else that wants to mention anything? Councilman Behad?
Sure. So I reached out to over eighty residents over the last weekend. I I kept mentioning when we had our last meeting, we were gonna do the zoning in progress to buy us some time, and I kept asking, like, you know, how much time can it buy us? Could it, can we? Can we, you know, do as the Board of Adjustment voted five zero to consider allowing murals on the in in the Business Corridor, Thirty-Sixth Street? So I reached out to over eighty people and spoke to a lot of people, got a lot of, got a lot of feedback. It tended to be, I think it seemed just in in formally from looking at it, like younger people wanted murals. You know, to a certain extent, there were, there were always, but it seemed that that people that were a little older were against it. Maybe that's because, you know, ones are, you know, one group is more progressive versus conservative, lowercase, conservative, lowercase c. But I think that I spoke with enough residents that I, so the the people that were against it, there were a lot of people that that were like, we're not Wynwood, you know, kind of the same kind of thing when we talked about development, like, we don't want to be Doral, or we don't, you know, they just seem pretty against it. Some people actually gave me some feedback that we hadn't heard, you know, some people, you know, mentioned, you know, Thirty-Sixth Street is already a street where you have a lot of accidents. This is gonna distract drivers because they're stopping to look at art. Some people kind of questioned whether or not you know, people are gonna stop and take selfies with the art, and is that the kind of thing that we want? It also struck me, you know, a lot of people said, well, we'd love to have murals, but so as long as we can control it, which that's kind of not how the First Amendment works, because if you're going to allow allow people to express themselves with art, then you can't really control how they express themselves. You can't allow them to express themselves with art as long as you agree with it or like it, because then that kind of, hence our issue with the, why it's tricky and you can't control it. Because you can't control a business from having, you know, a Trump flag or a giant BLM flag flying in 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 front of their their business. That's, that's that's protected speech. But I I do feel like I got enough feedback from residents, and by my tally, it was about sixty, forty, maybe a little bit more, people just didn't want it. Now, I know that you know, people said, and I think it was mentioned up here on the dais, that like, well, we had the issue with the hashtag One Nation on the signs that were on Curtis Parkway, that it would open up a can of worms. I mean, I don't see how this necessarily would come back to us. If a business decided to have a mural of of Che Guevara, then they're just basically, you know, limiting the number of patrons they will get, because some people may find that distasteful. But it wouldn't be on city property. So that that was kind of the issue with the people that had the, that were, that had an issue with the hashtag One Nation, not the issue they had is they felt like it was on city property. But I did have a lot of people that reached out and and gave Coral Gables as an example, because they've got, you know, and also on online, some people suggested, you know, have have certain topics, right? Rather than than trying to censor people, have certain topics that you want them to hit, whether that be, you know, aviation, or the city of Miami Springs, or, you know, things like that. And and from talking to Heidi, you know, one way that Coral Gables does it is as part of a a public art program where where the city, so now then, now it's the city that is paying for it, but the city has an artist approaches a private business, asks to use their their wall or frontage, and I'm assuming there's some kind of compensation from the city for that, and then, or no? Okay. All right. So basically, they asked for volunteers to give up a wall, and then they and then they have an artist paint a mural, so that would be at the expense of of the city. So, but that way, you could control content, because it's basically a public art program by the city. So based on the feedback that I got from folks, I had, I had, you know, quite a few people that said that they would be open to it, that they felt like it would help promote, you know, what they perceive as a blighted area there along Thirty-Sixth Street. Also had people that know development that told me, you know, the murals in and of itself are going to change, you know, aren't really gonna promote a lot along that that business corridor unless it's part of like a broader plan for how to, you know, promote development there. Just the the murals in and of themselves probably wouldn't make that big of a difference. So, that being the case, I feel like I've talked to enough residents that I I want to do, you know, side with the will of the of the people and the majority of the people that I spoke with, and 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 I think we should probably move forward on on disallowing murals. Now, I say that with, we have, we do allow murals right now in in the overlay district. But that's a different context, right? Because in that particular context, those are developers that are doing new construction that are negotiating to get their floor area ratio, they're trying to increase their density. Now, we technically can't censor content, but it also strikes me that a developer is going to do, want to do whatever, you know, the city deems is in the
Have to give them points.
Right, we don't have to give them points. I mean, you know, if they really were dead set on having a mural, and, you know, I don't know if there's any exposure there, but we don't have to give them points, and if they want to increase their density, they're gonna probably want to do what the city wants. So I don't know if we need to necessarily either include the overlay district or leave out the overlay district, because that's really the only place that murals are mentioned in the code is within the overlay district. Part of the problem with the whole U T D issue was that it was only mentioned there. So maybe that's something that we need to kind of work out. But as far as I appreciate the two weeks that we had to talk to residents, talk to lots of residents, lots of residents were very happy that I was reaching out to them about this, because I guess not everybody has time to come out to the meetings. But I I would be in favor of just disallowing, disallowing murals to close kind of the loophole that that was taken advantage of by the U T D. Because there there was a little bit of ambiguity in terms of how these things were defined in our code. And fix that problem so that we don't have to deal with something like that, and then we could talk down the line about a public art program by the city. So that's where I stand on that.
A little confused. That is the motion that Councilwoman Bravo?
Right, and you didn't second it.
Second it.
I did not, I did not, because I felt like, and maybe I should have seconded it with discussion.
Well, because we're gonna go to the discussion, so was that
Okay, so
Let's go back to
So that being the case, I'd like to, we're gonna have discussion.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I have not expressed myself on this. I just had an opening.
Okay, but let me just ask if if there's a motion, and then we can have more discussion.
Okay, so I would like to second it, but with the clarification that we need discussion about how that would be applied. Maybe that's not something that's gonna be decided now, maybe that's another, another framework that has to be developed by by council. So that being the case, then I I second Councilwoman Bravo's.
You'd have to make it again. So so Councilwoman Bravo would have to make a motion again, and then we'll open it up for, if there's a second.
So I'm going to make a motion to disallow murals with directing the attorney to draft up a resolution for that, and with details in respects to there are sections that I don't know how to say. I don't think we need to get into detail. I think I have enough direction. If 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 the motion is directing our office to prepare an ordinance prohibiting murals, we can do that, and we'll address how they're treated. If if we need to address a carve out for the Gateway District, we will. But I I would prefer, just so that we can work through what that would look like, I'd prefer something broad like that. I understand that the direction is to prohibit.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Now, Councilman Vasquez.
Yeah, um, thank you, Madam Chair. I I also reached out to a number of people, and and I think we may have talked to some of the same people, but anyway. And it, you know, there were a number of people that that are in favor of of murals because they are in favor of art, right? And and they understand murals could be one of the things that we could do to enhance the city, right? And, you know, a couple of people told me, hey, we ought to have murals on Westwood. So I don't know about that. We, this is not what we're necessarily talking about. We're talking about the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street District. So my own thinking on this, after looking at things, because I do, I do like art. I like murals, and I like all other kinds of artistic representation, and I look also to Coral Gables. I like the idea that that they had, that as part of a program to enhance the city, right? That they would take it upon themselves to have some artists do some renditions that they have, they would say, we want to have this, or we want to have that. So I'm a little careful about not saying, you know, government control, because we live in a in a town, a city, and a in a region, when you start talking about government control, that's that's a big no-no, and I agree with that, right? But but I don't know the details of how they came to that decision. Coral Gables did, but I like the idea that they established as part of an enhancement of the city to have a public arts program that the city would pay for and would decide what kind of renditions they want. And I talked to a couple of people who have taken pictures there. I haven't seen them myself. Because as a as a government, that's also part of our responsibility to to enhance the city and enhance it through the arts is one of the ways to do it. So that's where I fall on this issue, right?
Thank you, Council. Did you have something else? You wanted to say Councilman?
No, I just, you know, my vote would be in that direction, right?
Anyone else? Discussion? Councilman Best?
For discussion. Recognizing there is a motion and a second on the floor. I I I think that to totally exclude them, and I think there's a reason that there's nothing said about this in the in the Code of Ordinances to date. Obviously, it's a contemporary issue, but nonetheless, it 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 has come up before on council. Not to any extent, but it it has come up. And it went away kind of as quick as it came up. But now it's here to stay because of what we have with the U T D. I think we're missing the boat by not giving this further consideration down the road. And I'm thinking into the future here. There are some beautiful, absolutely gorgeous murals in towns similar to ours in appropriate places. Again, I refer to the counselor's work that she did on this and the ordinance that she drew up as a draft, I might add. But just so that we that we need to be thinking ahead and thinking progressively in terms of where Miami Springs is going. Are we gonna stay in the doldrums? Are we just gonna sit and say, okay, everything's fine on Thirty-Sixth Street? It looks beautiful, not. What are we gonna do about that? I don't think it needs to be applied specifically to Thirty-Sixth Street. I think that the overlay district is is a major player in this, as Councilman Fihad alluded to. It 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 could be a player. There could be reason for artwork in that area properly displayed and regulated, as I mentioned earlier in my opening remarks. So I I think we're 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 steering the boat the wrong way to just outright eliminate murals. I don't think that that's correct thinking. That's my opinion, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, so
Can I make another comment?
Well, let me go ahead and make my comments. And we have a motion and a second on the floor. Erica, do you have the PowerPoint that I was gonna show? Okay. Two things I want to mention is, one, with the art in Coral Gables, what they're doing is the city is deciding the art. I can tell you from experience, just as recently as even that, I anticipate will cause problems, and it's the kind of thing where eighty percent of the time, there's no problem, but twenty percent of the time, they're really big issues, and I anticipate that with murals. It's not, I love art, like, right now, you know, my good friends and I are having art in public, in City Hall this month, so no one loves art more than than I do. But I think we have a responsibility to our city to make sure that moving forward, that things are well thought out. And when I go back to the last two council meetings, the one with U T D and the last one here, we jumped around. These motions were this and then turned to this, and, you know, in in split second and all, and that shows me that these are not well thought out issues. And when something's not well thought out, when there's the ability to make a motion, remove it, you know, and all of a sudden go in totally a hundred and eighty degrees difference, it's not, I'm not saying it's, the reason, what I'm trying to point out is that it means to me that it's not well thought out. We haven't given time to this issue. My gut tells me when those things happen, you err on the side of not making mistakes for our community. The art in City Hall, you know, art in Coral Gables deciding the message, and they're paying for it. You're talking about a lot of expense for art. I don't see in our budget, you know, being able to allocate, and if we're spending, we got a good price at practically sixty thousand dollars to paint the outside of of the, to repaint the outside of the community center. Can you imagine what a mural must cost with scaffolding and the artist rights and all this? We're talking about hundred thousand dollars or something? I mean, realistically, we don't have that kind of money. And if we're talking about small murals, I can tell you, even within our residents, when the message is something that the intent is, you think we would all be for it. I know in May, which we're coming up in May, again, and William, you'll remember in May, which is Fallen Officers Month, Fallen Police Officers Month, we were flying a flag out in front that we've flown for how many years, William? Ten years, twenty years, who knows? A fallen officer flag, and I personally got a lot of complaints, and I don't know if the council members did, about why we were flying that flag that to a lot of people meant something different. And so even with the best intentions within our residents, things can be misconstrued. We all have different views of, you know, what something means. If you want to be offended, you can Google any saying, even if I say joy, and you can Google that to find a way that that will offend you, or that you will say that that's the best saying in the world. I just don't see us having to go there. The other issue is if we go with, and that's for the city, public, what is that called, Heidi?
Art and public works.
I know, but you had a certain word for it. What was?
It could be a public art program.
Public art program. Okay, so that's my reason for being against that. My reason for being against allowing businesses to have murals is because, as we've discussed, we have no ability because of of freedom of speech to regulate the content, the messaging, or anything on the mural, except that it can't be an obscenity. Well, there's a whole bunch of ways for things to be less than what we would like. You know, and it's not an obscenity, and we would have to allow it. And by coincidence, because Mikey here today, I heard you say you had talked to some council members about going into the Hialeah Arts District. Well, by coincidence, I had gone there last week. And these photos that I took, this is actually in North Miami, this is a photo on the side of a building. It's not a message. It's just, and it's not graffiti. I stopped and talked to the building people inside and said, oh, you know, is this that somebody graffiti the outside? And they go, no, my nephew, or I don't know who he said, put it out there, and, you know, they like to do art, and so it has to stay. To me, it looks like graffiti. They consider it as, you know, and so it's staying there. And then I went to over near the Wind Dixie and Hialeah that I go to sometimes. They happen to have behind there the Leah Arts District, and that's the sign of that whole area of, I guess, Hialeah Arts District, Leah Arts District. So you can make that bigger, Erica? Is it possible? This is within three-block radius. I'm going to show you some of the murals that I took photos of in their Arts District. And it's colorful. I mean, it's certainly colorful. It's beautiful. If you know, if somebody painted that and gave it to me, I think it's beautiful on my wall in my house, but I don't think But I don't think that's necessarily, you know, the, that's more the Winwood concept that, um, you know, is a gritty, fun vibe. I don't see how that would benefit Miami Springs in any way. Um, okay, so can you do some of the other? And these are all murals on the outside of the building, right here, walking. I mean, I could walk that. It's about three miles away. Um, now you could say that's obscene. That's not obscene, because that's what you would see in Miami Beach. The woman is more dressed than, than you would see at the beach or at the pool here in Miami Springs. So there's no way we could call that obscene. So imagine that on the side of one of our buildings. You can see with the flamingos, the birds, um, it's art. Here's another one. And actually, that's a very modern building next, uh, that it's painted on. It's, I don't know if you can tell with the windows and all. It's like furniture store or something. Oh, is that the brewery? Okay. Oh, you've been there. It's a very nice building. It's not. Tammy goes because of the murals. Um, this is another one. All, all of these are within walking distance of, and it's, you know, I, I have nothing against that art. It's fun to look at. Certainly, I don't think that that's what our residents are wanting. And again, um, it could be a beautiful mural that's painted on the side of a building, or it could be something like this that may be beautiful to a few. To the rest of us may look like, you know, it's, um, it's not in keeping with the nature of a, of a historical city. Um, that was, uh, incorporated in nineteen twenty-six. Is that the last one? There's more. It's colorful. And that might be good on the side of a, of a preschool, but no, it's on a very large building and that too. And this smiling face, I guess any owner could put their smiling face on the side of the building.
Country western fans, I think.
Last one, I think. Yeah. So I'm showing that to, um, just tell you why I will be voting against murals in the city. Regardless of what the motion is, uh, my motion will be, um, no murals in the city. Um, I don't, I think the problems, the potential, um, issues, the potential, um, look that we're getting is, um, you know, the negativity that's possible from that will far outweigh any positive results of, you know, a beautiful mural and, you know, something that we really, U T D gets to keep the mural because that's what the vote was, three, two last time, so they get to keep it. But other than that, I don't see any reason that, um, we need to, at this time. And if in future councils decide to revisit it, that's all certainly something. I mean, there's nothing here that, um, prevents, um, you know, for this to be in the future, but I think right now, at least for me personally, it, there's, um, no real great benefit to the city. I can't imagine anyone coming to visit Miami Springs just because we have a nice mural. I mean, there's a whole bunch of other reasons that, um, that they may come to Miami Springs, but I don't think the draw of the murals that we saw here will be, um, bringing people to, to eat in our restaurants. Um, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I had comment.
Sir?
Yes, so, um, so I mean, the, so you've mentioned now that we have the U T D because of the three, two vote, which is technically true. The, the U T D got to keep their, uh, mural, at least in my case, in terms of the vote that I made for very specific reasons. Uh, because of ambiguity in the kill, in the code and because, uh, it was going to mire the city in litigation. And, uh, all the other things that we discussed, uh, in terms of the themes and, uh, and everybody that got behind it. There were, I had people that, that told me about the U T D mural because it had rainbow colors and, and they had, uh, members of their family that were part of LGBTQ, had people that were behind that mural. And I know, I know, I'm getting to, I'm, I'm getting to.
Straight. Sure, go ahead. Our vote does not impact the U T D mural, right, Heidi? They keep, get to keep it. That's already been decided.
Through the chair, now that we're on that discussion, no, I'm sorry. I want to talk about, I don't know if it's for this meeting or the next meeting.
Okay, well, wait, wait, let's finish. Let, let Councilman Fihad finish. Yes, and we have a motion, but, um, just. All right, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So there's a myriad of reasons why the U T D got to keep that mural. As a matter of fact, I think it's important to state, because even in the media, they're reporting that the U T D, it's the big guy sticking it to the little guy. And they like to bring up the, uh, tattoo parlor. And when in point, in fact, the tattoo parlor, uh, they did not bring down their wall art because it was a mural. It's not the same as what happened with, uh, it wasn't the same case of the U T D. Because the tattoo parlor had the name of their business. It was brought down because it was a commercial sign that did not meet code. Uh, because a lot of people are, you know, so again, you talked about like, well, when, when you have a motion to do one thing and then you change it and do something else, it just means it's not something that's well thought out. Uh, if that makes me seem wishy-washy, that's fine. What I wanted was to buy us time to be able to talk to residents. Because at the end of the day, I personally, uh, I'm okay with murals, but I listen to people. And I wanted to listen to people and I talked to lots and lots of people, which is why I'm voting the way that I am now. That's, that's why I changed my motion in the last meeting, not because it wasn't well thought out. It's because I wanted to think about it so that it would be well thought out. That's why, that's why I'm, uh, prepared to vote the way I am now. But I do want to make sure, because people are getting the wrong impression about this, like, sure, we let, uh, you know, a, a big business get it and we're just sticking it to the, to the little guy. And then now they won't let anybody else do it. And that's not the case. The tattoo parlor, uh, was a different issue because it was a commercial sign that didn't meet code. It wasn't that it was a mural. And the U T D gets to keep their mural despite, uh, the fact that they, they rammed it down our throats. Because, uh, they took advantage of some ambiguity in our code to be able to fight it in court. And for a bunch of different reasons, because teachers were behind it, because there was a racist aspect to it, because it was defaced by somebody that was triggered by it. And because like every, all, it was a perfect storm of things that were going to put us in a position where we were going to have to litigate. And the only thing that they could guarantee us was that it would be lengthy and costly, but no one could guarantee us that we would be victorious. So that's why at the time, when I was being emotional, I was like, we need to fix this tomorrow. But there's, there's my emotion and then there's how I vote. And at that time I voted in, uh, what I thought was in the best interest of the city, because I have a fiduciary duty to the city. And so I stand by that, even though I thought that, you know, I felt like the U T D could go fly a kite because they did us wrong. I did what I thought was best for the city. So last, uh, meeting, when we were deciding whether or not to do it, I was at one point emotional, like, you know what? Let's just say no. We said we were going to fix it, but I said, you know what? Let's come up with a framework to see how it would look for regulated and buy us some time to talk to residents. I talked to lots of residents. So I like to measure twice and cut once, and that's why I'm holding the position that I have now. Is that I think that residents don't want it, even though there were quite a few that did. Uh, but I get it. That's not, to me, it's not about like whether I, you know, art is subjective. Uh, and the First Amendment is an important thing. That's why it's first. Uh, but if the residents don't want it, just like other things that we've had in the past, that, that have been, you know, ideas that, that we could defend. If the residents don't want it, then, then I'm not going to support it because I listen to the residents. And so that's why I'm supporting, uh, disallowing at this time.
All right. Thank you, Councilman.
I, um, Mayor, if I might, before you call the vote, madam, uh, I, I, I like your adage there, uh, Councilman Fihad. Measure twice, cut once. I think this line of thinking, and I see the way this is going tonight, no question about it. But I think instead of measuring twice, cutting once, I think we're measuring once and cutting twice relative to thinking down the road in terms of how this might be regulated. And to give the attorneys the ability to come up with something that would make sense for the city and not to shut it down and say, we're done with this. This is, this is, this is dangerous thinking, in my opinion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Fahad?
Yes, on disallowing.
Councilman Best?
Nay.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
No.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay, we move to the next, and, and Councilman Fihad, I just wanted to make the motion. I didn't mean to personally, I said, what I meant was when we're this back and forth, it makes me feel like this is, we're, you know, we.
We're good.
I, I personally will err on the side of not taking action.
We're good. Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just to thank you that I came here looking for an up and down vote. Yay or nay?
And that's, you said that at the beginning, Councilman. You said that at the beginning. That's right. We went around a long way, but we got to one of A or N. But we got there, A or N. But we still have first and second reading when I bring back the ordinance, so. All right.
You can't say I don't have a sense of humor.
Yes.
I appreciate that, Councilor.
All right, thank you. Um, is that the, the green was for the hope for the, that we come to a decision?
Yeah.
And we did it.
We did it. Yeah, so.
We're in green too.
That was my hope.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, now, um.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Could we bring up eleven B so that, uh, Omar can, uh?
Sure.
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
Yes, yes, yes.
Pickle your way up, Omar.
You have the revised memo that, uh, Erica? Let me just read it to the record, Omar, and then you can, you and Manny can do your. Recreation Department working together with Matchpoint Tennis Incorporated would like to provide a few options for potential pickleball courts in the city of Miami Springs. We have currently looked at the various areas and green spaces in the city, and we feel that these are the best options to discuss. These ideas or options are presented with the purpose of having designated courts that are exclusive to pickleball. Number one, remove the current racquetball courts from the tennis center and build two to three pickleball courts at the, at the tennis center. A new racquetball court would be built at Stafford Park. Number two, build three to four new pickleball courts at Stafford Park. Pictures of the locations are attached. And number three, build three to four new pickleball courts at the golf course. Again, uh, Omar has some pictures of the locations attached. Pros and cons to number one, this will be the ideal spot for pickleball. We would also be able to use the pickleball courts for youth tennis programs, et cetera. The facility already has restrooms and infrastructure for lights and other opportunities. In order to use this option, we would need to have the racquetball court built at Stafford Park as we discussed during our meeting on use of A R P A funds. Another issue to consider is that since we are doing major stormwater projects that affect Stafford Park and specifically the area where the new racquetball court would go, we cannot begin construction until the end of twenty twenty-three or beginning of twenty twenty-four, after the stormwater project is completed. Number two, the, the second option, this could be a great addition to Stafford Park. However, depending on the location of the courts, we could run into additional costs due to potentially having to raise, right, raise the area due to past flooding issues and also maybe adding lights to the area to play at night. This option would also require waiting until twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four as an option one above. And the third option, the golf course is a great option also. There's ample parking, restrooms and plenty of open space. We will be recommending the green space behind the country club where the archery used to play. This area is wide open and not near any residence. We would need to add lights and infrastructure. Finally, the options presented above are long-term solutions. In the short term, we could start a pilot program at the current tennis courts by striping one of the existing courts to that it could be used for pickleball. However, Manny Fabian and I, this is, uh, coming from Omar, as well as the representatives from the pickleball organization that visit our tennis courts, feel that this could present challenges and have a negative effect on the tennis program. We are projecting that if we stripe one court at our tennis facility for pickleball, that this could cause a bigger issue with due time. Pickleball is a growing sport and we foresee that one court will create issues with how many patrons are using the courts and also with our current tennis patrons. Does sum it up, Omar?
Yeah, pretty good.
Um, I, one question and, and nice presentation, by the way. I mean, all of us have had a chance to read what you gave us. Relative to the Stafford Park option, remember that's school board property, correct?
That is correct.
That's not mentioned in any of the.
Well, I, I figure you guys already knew that. I didn't want to add any more fuel to the fire, but yes, you are correct.
That's, 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 that's pretty.
Do we have a lease on that for a certain amount of time or is it just kind of a?
On going, yeah.
Is it every five or ten years?
After we renew it.
Ten, ten years, every ten years. Okay, and when is that? Well, it doesn't matter because we're not going to build.
I think it's coming up.
Less than ten years, so. Um, that's something to keep in mind for sure.
Oh, you're right. You're right. I- is there any way that we could s- sneak another pickleball court in at the tennis facility without compromising the tennis courts?
No, I don't think we could do that.
Yeah, because in your presentation, you mentioned you could do two slash three, two or three. I took that to.
What you mean, if we knock down, sorry, I, I might have kind of confused your question. You're talking about if we knock down the racquetball courts?
Well, I think that was the, that was the thought.
Yeah, so yes, if we knock down the racquetball courts, we could definitely get two. We might be able to squeeze three.
But not four.
But not four, no way. And squeezing three might even be stretching. It would depend how much we can stretch towards the canal, which that would depend on engineering and soil samples and things like that, if we even support it. We can get two for sure. Stretching three would be already testing the waters on that canal.
Right. Uh, to me, it seems like the cheapest option. There's no question. Uh, but you're not going to get the number of courts, like if they wanted to do a tournament or something, you're not going to be able to do a tournament with two courts.
That is correct. Right now for tournaments, they're looking for at least minimum four courts.
That's right, that's why.
Six to seven courts would be ideal to host tournaments.
Right.
If that's was a vision that we were looking at, yes. Mayor, I have a question. I have a question. Um, if we go with two or three, what's the plan for the racquetball courts at the tennis center? Well, that would be, we'd have to demo those and eventually move that operation to Stafford Park.
But we're talking.
But if you do, so like if you do number two, which is doing the pickleball courts at Stafford Park, then you would still demo, uh, racquetball at the tennis center?
No.
No.
That's another.
So then what, so that, I guess that's my question, is that if we, if we go somewhere else to do the pickleball courts, what's the plan for the racquetball courts over? That would be a budget question that we have for, I guess, in the budget process to discuss where that goes. This, this will drive, I guess, where that goes eventually. Right. So I have another question. What, and was, what did we earmark for building the new racquetball courts at Stafford Park? Three hundred thousand? Is that, would that cover doing the pickleball? Like, how does that compare to what we want to do pickleball wise at Stafford? That should cover it. If we were to do that, that, that should cover at least four courts, three to four courts.
With the pickleball courts should be a lot less than the racquetball courts, right? Because we're just talking about the concrete or the.
So, so the cost is tricky. The cost is tricky because you're, I'm not an engineer, so I can't give you an example of what it will cost to raise the earth. It, it's impossible for me to know that. So what I could tell you is that a pickleball court on average right now is about twenty-five to thirty thousand, right?
Each.
But that, yeah, each, but that does not give you what we would say would be earthwork or drainage or a bunch of things that are added into it until we get somebody out there and we say, okay, this is the location and they'll tell us, well, you got to raise it. So if you're talking about excavation of all this earth and adding to raise up, that costs money. So it's, it's very hard for me to get, to give you guys a cost. I've reached out to Auburn Tour and other cities that have done them, and you're looking at average, I think it was about twenty-five thousand per court. Lighting could be anywhere between a hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand. So if you're adding four courts, it's about a hundred grand. You had lighting, another one fifty. We're in that range of two fifty to three hundred. You add fence, you have another thirty thousand, twenty thousand. But it depends. It depends. It, it's very tricky. Um, at Stafford Park, things are always been extremely tricky because of the fact that it's one of the lowest areas, if not the lowest area in the city. So anything you build there, I mean, the playground, we build it, we had to raise it. Like, it was astronomical how much we had to put there in earth just to get that playground where it wouldn't flood. So it costs us more to build out the area than it was to put the playground in.
Through the chair.
In essence.
Yes, Councilman. I'm sorry, Omar.
No, go.
Um, question, Manny, I know you're there on the tennis courts every day. Do you see that the racquetball area has a lot of traction? Like, is it, the volume is there to rebuild a racket ball court? Or would you say that tennis has more demand and make more tennis courts where the racquetball area is?
Well, te- tennis does have more.
Well, tennis does have more demand. Uh, but there is a contingent of racquetball community that plays out there. Uh, there are regulars that go out there two, two nights a week, and then there you have the occasional people that come out. So on a, that's that's a ten million dollar question. People say, was today a good day to go play racquetball? Is it going to be busy? Other than Tuesday? Okay, which I know is going to be busy on Tuesdays. Uh, every day is a toss-up. I mean, it could be a day where I have, you know, people rotating in there. There could be a day where it's a ghost town in there.
And and what is it possible to? And I know Mayor Wheeler's here. I don't know if you want to speak as far as to the racketball courts, but is it possible? And I know I've mentioned this before. I know for tennis, if the courts aren't really in good condition, if you like to play tennis, you don't play. You know, unless you want to go hit the ball with your friends. Is racketball, is it possible that because of the condition of our racketball courts, and maybe Mayor Wheeler can answer this, um, that not very many people play racketball in our community because they're, you know, and and they would be more apt to play, but they're not going to spend their time.
That's possible, and maybe he can answer that better than than I, but I I.
Are you're the Tuesday racketball? Is it just Tuesdays?
Sorry.
The weather affects it a lot also. Since they're outdoors.
Just in general, if the courts were in better condition, there would be more people playing, yes. I do agree with with Manny that trying to put pickleball on the tennis courts would be a mistake. He's got too good of a thing going over there with the youth. He's doing a good job with them.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir. Um, thank you, Mayor.
So I I I looked at this, you know, I read it and I thought about it and been by the different areas. Um, and I thought about the demonstration of pickleball. You know, they had me a pickle because I'm from New York, you know, they we pick this with everything. But anyway, that aside, um, you know, I like the idea of trying something new, something that seems popular in other places. But I always have the concern of of, you know, replacing something that's being used, right? Like racquetball or whatever with with something else, because we certainly have plenty of space, but it's it's the cost, right? That that worries me that uh, what it would cost to put together this. I'm concerned about doing it at Stafford because it's it is a school district property. So I'm a little hesitant about that, although we are going to be doing some work uh, over there in terms of the drainage. And I guess if I were inclined to anything at this moment, which I'm not, it would probably be to the back of the the golf course because that's not a place where we, you know, usually have that kind of activity. Uh, again, cost are a consideration because you have to put up lights and then and a bunch of other things, right?
Correct.
Omar, so, um, you know, I I get the feeling a little bit that this is like Field of Dreams. That turned out pretty good, but anyway. And 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 it might be a little bit longer down the line than we would like and that the folks that presented the pickleball option would prefer, but I, you know, I I need to think about this a little bit more. But I am definitely not in favor of 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 replacing the racquetball field with the, you know, with court with the with the pickleball, and it's not even enough big enough. You know, as you said, there must be other challenges there and so forth. So and I'm not inclined to Stafford because of the ownership of the school district. So I'd be in favor of us moving forward to think, you know, to to elaborate this. I know people want to get this started right away, but it's going to take money and it's going to take, you know, a long-term project and commitment of the city to to do it right. And I think, in my opinion, Omar, I think to really do it right, we need to do it from scratch. In other words, really look to look at a area and say, the potential is here, but we would need to do A, B, C, and D to really build it out the way it should be, seems to me. And and it's all costly.
Yeah.
To the chair.
Yes, Sam.
I'd be inclined, um, as in Councilman Vazquez, I've always said from the beginning, the golf course, I mean, it's our central station for sports. I'd like for it to see to see it be a sports center where you can go and play golf. And if after golf, you can go and play pickleball. Pickleball is 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 growing at a velocity where the city can actually make money. But I also think it's important that we put it where it makes sense as well. And I think the general population demographics that go to Miami Springs Country Club would probably invest in pickleball right on the golf course. Um, so I think it's really important that we give the sport, if we're going to give it a chance, a spot where it makes sense, where it makes it it just it shoots off making revenue. And not only that, but making it more comfortable, more convenient so that, you know, our visitors and our golfers and whoever goes to go ahead and experience and different sports at the same time. So I think that this is a positive opening to the community where they see that um, we're doing something for the community. This is not a private entity. This is not a business taking over our 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 golf course. This is city, and this is for the residents. It's for nobody else. And I think it would help bring back revenue to the golf course, and it's just it it would be a nice addition. I wouldn't be scared to to touching a little bit of, you know, getting our hands wet in the golf course. I'd be inclined and open to that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman and Councilman Best.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Bravo, you speak correctly, at least in my way of thinking. The downside, if you want to talk cost on this deal, is the fact that if you if we were to elect to do it where the current racquetball courts are, there would there would be a savings, but there would also be the downside of demolition and stuff of the racquetball courts. So you'd have to add that cost to it, too.
Right.
Uh, saving the fact that, as I mentioned earlier, that the school board owns Stafford, and that's a push to put anything there, quite frankly. Um, the golf course seems to me to be the logical place to go going forward. I know for years, when before the pool got built, there was a lot of folks in this town that wanted to put it over at the golf course, the pool. Then there was friends of mine that played golf for a living, pretty much, and they said, wait a minute. I'm putting on eighteen and you're hearing all these kids screaming in the pool. I mean, that that just doesn't go together. Golf and swimming pools don't go together. I always said that back then. But golf and racket clubs do go together. So that's why what Councilman Bravo brought up seems to me to make perfect sense.
I can think of one added benefit to that, too, is it would be the first recreational facility that we have that has a viable food option. So it would benefit, I can see particularly the pickleball community probably stopping to have lunch before or drinks after or something, which would be a bonus for um, our country club, uh, food and and beverage vendors and for the whole atmosphere, you know, that it'd be fuller. So I I think that that's nice, and we really don't have that in any of our other recreational facilities, something that, you know, you could stop right there and enjoy getting together for a meal or a snack or or drink before or after. Um, but I have a question as far as safety. Um, and I don't know nothing about golf. What about the golf balls?
Driving range.
The.
They gotta wear a helmet. No, I'm just kidding.
No, there's, 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 there's enough, there's enough distance there. Um, right behind that area where we shouldn't have any issues when it comes down to that. I will make a recommendation. This is moving forward. Um, there are some pros and cons to the site. I think one of the pros is, for example, if we were to move pickleball there in the long term, to say it doesn't take off the way it's been taking off, you could still have those courts for tennis. I would almost encourage where we, if we design the project where it's phased out, maybe in some years from now, we have a plan in place to move the tennis facility from where it currently sits.
There you go.
To the country club. So now you have a tennis slash golf slash country club, which I think long term, that would create a lot of energy in the city moving forward, especially for golf and all of that. So I don't want us to think where we're just going to put pickleball courts there. I would tell you professionally that I think it's better to maybe phase this out where if we were to do pickleball court, we we understand that potentially in the future, we could add other amenities there so that we would move the tennis facility there. You guys know just as much as myself and Manny, those courts, I mean, we put a Band-Aid on them every two years because of the the water table in the canal. And eventually, we we've talked about it at length, where we put them at, where if we're going to start this momentum, I think that could be something we look at towards the future. We could phase these projects out. Aventura's done that where they phase some of the projects out. So it doesn't happen right away. The impact financially is not right away, but with due time, we eventually move that project over there. But then again, then you have a tennis court facility that we would have to put a park there, et cetera. But those are all things we could discuss later.
But we would use that site, uh, the possibilities of creating another park.
Correct.
Where the current tennis court facilities are.
You create a passive park there, a basketball court, a bunch of things that we could do on that site that would, you know.
All three sites need lights. All three sites would need lights for pickleball, right?
Yes, they don't.
Even the tennis court sites, if we reuse the racketball, it's not going to happen. Okay, so lights would be a cost regardless of the site.
Correct.
It does have infrastructure for lights to be put in. I mean.
Yeah, well, the the thing is that there's lights already there, so we would have to, you'd have to get the poles, but at least we have the trenching. We can, you know, there's there's electrical there. Um, at the golf course, it might be more of a challenge, but there's power somewhere in that facility. So it's 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 just about the cost of it. Um, again, it's like Councilman said, it comes down to dollars.
Yep.
It comes down to dollars.
Have you had any feedback from Paul or Lori regarding using the golf course?
No, I have not. I have not talked to them because I didn't want to.
Manny here as far as the tennis courts, but we're kind of giving away the golf course right now without talking to them, so.
No, I mean, I I have not reached out to them because I wanted to, you know, find out where you guys, you know, what, you know, where your guys' feelings were on this. And then obviously, now that if that's something you guys are really interested in, we'll have to speak to Paul and no, let us.
I think one of the issues, and I know Manny from the beginning has said this, and and Manny's been very, very accommodating and flexible and understanding and trying to, you know, to to figure out a way that we can start offering pickleball here. But from the beginning, you said, you know, if the pickle, if the tennis, if a tennis court is being used also for pickleball, it means we're taking away tennis from some residents, you know, the opportunity to tennis because and and from my understanding from what was explained at the last meeting, there's a lot of people that show up for the pickleball one after the other because it's one after the other. So even with tennis, you know, tennis, you you want your private, you know, your space and you don't want a lot of people around and a lot of noise and all. And I can see how even that would, um, you know, impact the what tennis players have right now at the tennis courts, which they're entitled to have that semblance of a real, you know, dedicated tennis court, too. So.
Through the chair.
To think of here. Yes, sir.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no problem.
Um, I I I think we're going in the right direction here. I think that considering that we like the idea of pickleball, right? We we really enjoyed the, I know I did it, but I think we all did enjoy the presentation and the potential. Um, i- if we're going to, if the city is going to invest in this, as you mentioned, Madam Mayor and 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 Councilwoman Bravo, that that we want to increase the opportunities for people to go and engage and golf and and pickleball. It just makes sense. So I'm, you know, my inclination, my my push would be for us to, you know, build a Field of Dreams in uh, in in the golf course area and and and, you know, with the hope that they that they will come, and it's and it seems they will. So I think that I'm not sure we're ready to move, um, if there's, if there's a, if there's a a moment now to to make a motion on this because we have three options, right, to to look at. And I think really, by the way, Omar, I agree with Councilman Best is really well presented, and I looked at this and from looking at it, I was like, it seems like the golf course is really the place. The other thing that you said that made a lot of sense was, you know, if you took the racketball, we couldn't build four courts and and that's and Councilman Best pointed out. So we're going to do this, and we want to be not only attract people, but be make it be a competitive mode, as Councilwoman Bravo mentioned in terms of revenue and things of that nature. It sounds like if 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 it works the way it's been working around the country, this is going to take off. And if we want to be in the in the environment of competition, then we need four courts there to make it to make it happen. So, um, I don't know, I'd like to move that we we consider this, uh, this option.
Okay, we have more discussion.
I second that with discuss, well, not a discussion.
Well, there's not a motion yet.
Oh, did you make a motion or no?
No.
Yeah, no, I was just trying to frame the motion.
Yeah.
That 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 the option, I'm sorry, is that the third option?
Yeah.
Third option is. Third option is the one that we ought to pursue.
Okay, since this is kind of fluid right now, before we make a motion, can we finish hearing everyone? Because it's kind of, you know, we're in a lot of areas right now, Councilman.
Wait, I'll let, I'll let.
Okay, the last and quick thing that I wanted to say was that we have less than a handful of pickleball in South Florida. So we're super central and we're localized very well. So right now would be the time to jump on it for instant revenue. You have people traveling for business and they do executives, they do, and they do go to the the country club to for leisure on their time off. But I think our location and with the fact that we have less than five dedicated in South Florida would be huge for Miami Springs.
I I have something on that, though.
Yeah.
Um, a quick, and I'm sorry, I'm asking these questions as they come up, but right now, if we were to do it at the racket, at the tennis courts that we have right now, which is a problem because let's not forget that we have racquetball players in Miami Springs and we need to, you know, we at last budget hearing, we agreed to look into making new or better or improved racquetball courts and not just, you know, painting them over each time like we've been doing. Um, but Manny is managing the racquetball courts and the tennis courts. If we were to build them at the the golf course, that's another staff person or another contractor or something to manage that because it can't be, I'm guessing, or is it like open racquetball courts where you can just go and play? How are you envision this? I don't know.
It it just depends on on how we propose it across the board, whether it's something that we want to generate the revenue ourselves, or we would have to staff it with city employees.
Going to do it for revenue, then we have to staff it. If it's just open and available, then, you know, but then there won't be the revenue.
Correct. It all depends on the angle that we take. At the end of the day, if it's something that the city is interested in us generating the revenue, then we'll have to staff it. We'll have to have operating hours. We'll have to have, you know, staff there managing the site facility, things like that, uh, which is which is not complicated at all. Uh, if we want a where it's just open recreation, then the courts are there, people come to play, it's open recreation, we could do the lights where they turn on when it gets dark, photocell. So that's operational discussions we could have once we even, you know, decide to build them there. But either way, whichever way we decide to go, it's it can be done, whether we've contracted out to Manny, let's say, for example, added onto his agreement, and maybe he has staff members there. That's that's something we could discuss internally. But either way, it's not an issue for us. We will make it happen. That's the case.
Okay.
Mayor, I had a series of questions. First of all, to Mayor Wheeler, would you play three-wall racquetball? If that's all there was? Right. And that was always my point when they were talking about moving it to Stafford and going from four-wall to three-wall is that it's a different game and you're you're going to lose those people. Um, what Omar, what was the what was the thinking about the feasibility of building something on Stafford? It strikes me that Stafford has more infrastructure, right? Because I know the golf course and I know the eighteenth green and the tenth fairway and the right-hand side of the of the driving range. And like getting back there is not like, it just seems like, it's not that I'm against doing something on the golf course, but what why are, what was our thinking behind doing something on Stafford? Does it, is it like fee, did it seem feasible when we talked about doing the racquetball courts over there? My only problem with the idea of doing the is that it was going to be three-wall, and I just felt like you're not doing anything for the racquetball players. But is that something like, how long have we had a lease with the with the county, with Miami-Dade County Public Schools? And does it seem like, do we feel like it's they would be amenable to us building that there? Just because it it seems like you get a bunch of people coming to play pickleball, there there's already lighting there. It's it's part of a larger park. There's more places to park. People park at AIE. That's not an issue. I just, uh, I feel like, uh, I mean, I know that we'd have to raise the pad. You would have had to raise the pad at Stafford for for three-wall racquetball. Like, it would have been the same thing. You would have, the pad is the pad. So I just, what, why are we now feeling like, uh, maybe I'm putting words in people's mouth, but is it is it, is it feasible to build something on Stafford Park based on?
Yeah, I'm not going to put an option on paper that's not feasible.
Right.
It's one hundred percent feasible, but with everything, there's a cost. There's.
Right.
It just depends on what, where you want to go.
But beside besides the cost, though, because we kind of talked about like, well, that lease is up and like, you know, we don't want to build something and then, you know, like, hey, you guys, they kick us out, like, that doesn't seem like a likely thing that we're not going to have.
If if you're asking me, I doubt, this is my personal opinion.
Right.
I doubt the school board is going to kick us out of a park that services a hundred and fifty kids a day. That's a political nightmare for them. Um, but again, that's something that we don't know.
We also take care of the park.
Correct, but we can't guarantee that.
No, I got you.
It's just one of those that if you ask me my personal opinion in the twenty-five years I have in parks, I've never seen a school board take away a park that's being utilized as much as it is in the community, like we use ours.
Right.
It's just, I mean, you guys are council members. If you were on the school board. It, it's just, I mean, you guys are council members, if you were on the school board and all of a sudden they took away a park, you're gonna have 150, 200 people at that, at that school board meeting saying, you guys nuts. Like it's, it's a reality of it. Now, could they take it from us? Yeah, absolutely. There's just no way for us to guarantee that. They could tell us, you know, hey, in your, next year, when this thing's up, we're gonna take our, our poverty back. That's the reality of it. What are the chances? Probably slim to none. So that's why I continue to move Stafford Park forward as far as like, you know, new path, new field, you know, new lighting. I've moved that part forward.
Doing that.
We're still doing that. So that's why it's an option. Because the reality is that to give you guys an opportunity to have a discussion, I gotta give you guys options. Now, the racquetball courts, we were gonna move them there and there were gonna be, there was gonna be two, our final proposal would be two, we're gonna be three-wall and then two, we're gonna be four-wall. That was gonna be the final proposal. We were waiting for the budget to come around, but yeah, Stafford Park is an option. There is lighting there. We would have to add maybe a couple more poles. There is infrastructure, there's restrooms, there is parking, there, there are things there. So, yeah, that was one of the options we put on there. There's definitely an option to do that there. Absolutely.
It's just that I think of where archery was tucked in, uh, behind the clubhouse and it was kind of like, you know, I mean, I know, I know it, it, it had lights, but that's kind of like, to me, it just seemed kind of narrow when I think of.
There's enough space there.
Right.
Now, the, the lighting, the lighting.
Not, not infrastructure like at Stafford.
No, not, not, not in that case. Uh, but there's, there's, like you said, there's pros and cons everywhere. Like at the golf course, I saw it as very similar to where it could create a business venture for the, for, for the golf course, uh, especially the, 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 the restaurant and things like that. I saw an opportunity for us long-term to have other options there. Uh, like I said, with tennis, things like that. Uh, I, I like Stafford also because it's, you know, it already has a restroom, it already has parking, you know, I already have staff there all the time. So there's, there's, it just depends on what angle we want to take. It's not as easy as we all think. Like I go to the sites and I even told William, I go, they're all pretty good. It just depends on what we want to do. And then it depends how much money is in a cost.
It just seems to me like we'd have to really reconfigure and add some infrastructure at the golf course. And maybe, maybe in the long term, that's good, but I just, like driving back there.
No, I mean, people would have to park in the parking.
Right. And then I, and I guess walk.
And have to walk.
Back to the back.
Yeah. But if you look at it, if you park at AIE, it's basically about the same walks if you were to put them at Stafford. It's.
Yeah, if, if you put it over in the corner.
Yeah, it just depends. Like at the golf course, if, if the vision long-term is to do more, then I think it could make sense for us. If the vision is to just put six, uh, courts there and just leave them there, then that, that might not be the best. So it, it all depends on what angle we want to take.
I think the, the one thing we're forgetting, uh, is we still have the problem with the racquetball court.
Right.
What are we gonna do with that?
Yeah, that's right. That's, that's very true.
I was gonna ask a question on the racquetball. You okay?
Yeah.
No, it's, uh, getting an allergy attack. Wheeler, I know I don't want to pickle you anymore, but, um, you're an active racquetball player. So I want to ask you, based on your experience, what location would be ideal for, would you go? I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea. Should it stay where it's at and just be fixed or? I, I don't see the issue of the location now, but I, I, you know, I've never been keen about investing, even though we lease.
What about if we do this? I think we're all open, we're all open to doing pickleball. Doing redoing the, the racquetball courts. And I really do think the racquetball courts, you know, providing these opportunities, I hate to take, add something and take something away. It's like, then we're really nowhere. My concern with Stafford Park is the parking. I think it gets pretty crowded, the parking, whereas the country club, there's more, but I also like the idea of the country club having that opportunity for the food and service, which struggles a lot of times. You know that there isn't any, unless there's golfers there to have that whole venue be something more of a country club. But, but I'm not opposed to Stafford Park by any means. I think the one thing we've probably all ruled out or, or would be our last option is the current location of where the racquetball courts are because that whole area with roots and the canal and erosion and presents maintenance issues and there's not a lot of space. So, I'm thinking perhaps let Omar relook at all three, come up with maybe a diagram, say at the, like Councilman Fajat was asking, at the golf course, where exactly it would be, at Stafford Park, where exactly it would be. And, but a combination of both because we're talking about racquetball too. Is it, the pickleball courts are going to be, from what you're saying, then I thought that would be a lot less than new racquetball courts, but not necessarily.
Necessarily, they're about the same footprint, give or take. Cause I, I think, what was it Manny? You have to have five feet in between the courts. You have to have like five or six feet in between the courts. You have to have about eight feet off the baseline. So it, it, you still need a bunch of, it's still, yeah, it's about.
Through the chair, what did those presenters that were in front of us a couple of weeks ago say? That in one basketball court, you could fit two pickleball. I, I, I seem to remember them saying that.
Yes, if you, you have to go like.
Salvation Army, they have one basketball court, three pickleball courts.
You can get that many, Manny?
Yeah.
Wow. That's even better. I mean, that's, that's kind of.
Okay, so.
Get the idea, I mean.
Are we all on the same page that we'd like both, you know, racquetball and pickleball?
And just something on what you suggested, um, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm good with that. Is there any way we could come up with, and I know this is, uh, you know, some difficulties in projecting here, but could we come up with some basic projection of course? I think for either one, I don't, is that, is that feasible to add to a design, you know?
Yeah.
Of course. You know, ballparks. Cause I, I think I would, I would, cause I, now I'm back and forth with the, with the other choice as well.
And I have a quick question with the, um, tennis, you're near some residences and at night when people are playing, I mean, tennis players are a pretty quiet group as the most part. Um, maybe Enrique, you know this better, or pickleball players a little more boisterous? That, um, East Park, something, you know, at Stafford Park could cause residents nearby to complain about the noise at night?
Any more than a soccer game?
Okay.
There you go, alright. Enrique Guerrero, two forty Lenape Drive. So the question.
That are they much more boisterous late at night that it's, that would be a concern? Well, it's true, like that Councilman.
You, uh, you have more density of people because actually you, you can have, uh, eight people in the same area of a tennis court playing at the same time. It's a more social game, so people will talk more. And sometimes somebody brings some music, not loud music, but you know, a company. So it's a different uh, racket sport than, than tennis in that regards.
But it still should be far enough from the residences that at Stafford Park.
I'm just wondering noise, whether it was any louder or, or less than, than a soccer game or something.
Oh, probably, probably less than a soccer game.
Well, that's what I've seen there.
Less than a soccer game.
Mayor, I, I'd like to thank, thank you.
And also, uh, it's three courts on a basketball court.
It's three, okay.
That's where we play at Salvation Army at Sunset Drive.
Oh, thanks. Appreciate it.
It, so it strikes me from listening to the conversations that, that the most strategic kind of long-term view is to get our foot in the door on, on the golf course property. I think that we all agree that we want to build pickleball courts. Uh, I don't think that it's feasible. I, I think option one should be off the table because it, it sounds like long-term, you know, the tennis courts are not built somewhere where, you know, where it could be long-term. So if it's between Stafford and the golf course, I feel like if we all want to have pickleball uh, right away, I think that we should just have Omar focus on, on a design for, and a design and a cost for the golf course. Get that started with an eye towards, you know, because we talk about, so what do we do with the golf, you know, the, the racquetball courts, you know, we kick the can down the road, you know, and maybe then, then down the line, that could be where we go. Whereas if we do that at Stafford Park, we don't have that option. So it, it seems to me from talking to everybody that, that the way to go is to just, you know, start our plan for pickleball at the golf course with an eye towards the future and then, uh, you know, and then, you know, people could still play racquetball until the time comes to move, to move that over to that site. And, uh, I feel like, I feel like continuing to talk about Stafford probably is, is not the most efficient use of Omar's time. I think that, uh, at least the way I'm looking at it, I think that the best way to go is to start being strategic about, about the golf course property and, and thinking about that.
Yeah, through the chair, yeah, uh, Councilman Fajat or Vice Mayor Fajat is correct. Um, it, it leaves us the most options available. And clearly it's a logical way to look at it going forward, uh, as Councilwoman Bravo mentioned earlier. That's, uh, that's kind of my thought on it, Mayor.
Great. Anything else? I think we've given you direction, Omar. Um, we don't need to vote on this, right? It's just direction to start looking, coming up with, um, possibilities for using the golf course. I think in the long run, that's what's gonna benefit our community the most. It gives us most, like Councilman, Vice Mayor Fajat said, um, gives us the most long-term um, flexibility to improve upon. And I like your idea of possibly with the tennis courts. And I know since we moved to Miami Springs in the eighties, that was the thought is move the tennis courts to the golf course, move the tennis courts to the golf course. So, um, possibly down the road, it can be done little by little. And we still have to do the racquetball courts.
Can I make a question in that regard? Like the racquetball courts aren't gonna like fall off into the abyss.
The ones that we currently have?
Like, yeah. I mean, we can keep putting a Band-Aid on it until we decide to do.
Like a Richard. I know, I know.
You won't be in it when it falls off into the abyss.
They're not gonna go anywhere like that.
Right.
But we need, we need new racquetball.
Yeah, no, but.
Why don't we think, why don't we think about this going forward with the next budget about rebuilding the racquetball courts?
That is in our budget.
Yeah, but I, I thought we replaced that with pickleball.
We're not, no.
Well, I don't know that, where, where all we're doing is you're coming up with a plan of.
Well, I didn't know you were gonna do four-wall. I am in favor of not investing money in three-wall.
Well, eventually when, when you first brought it up, we, we took into consideration.
Right.
The design would have, was, was built out with that, with the four-wall.
Yeah, I, I would not do three-wall. That's just my opinion.
Have we confused you enough, Omar? You have an idea.
So are we looking at pickleball and racquetball?
Possibility of both at the golf course.
We can do that.
Do the chair? Yes. And I mean, to piggyback on baskets, just not baskets, um, Councilman Fajin. Um, maybe we want to get a proposal for both activities there and separate, just so we can have an idea. And then we might say, well, we'll just move with pickleball on the golf course and we'll continue to racquetball the tennis courts. And maybe it makes sense to move it over already. You don't know.
Is, we, we, we'll, we'll get together with Paul first. Yeah, so they can scout out the.
Poor Paul, where is he?
He hasn't even been consulted.
He'll give up his office.
We are talking about his activity, right?
For archery for a long time, so I, I'm sure there will be no problem, but, and after we talk to Paul, then Omar can talk to some people and get some estimates of what it will cost to build the, the pickleball. I just want you to keep in mind that all it takes is money. Uh, we have, we only have 300, uh, thousand set aside from ARPA, which is supposed to go for the racquetball. So that money's sitting there. But at the same time, I want you to keep in mind that we're coming back at the next meeting, uh, regarding the renovations at the golf course, and that's about 3.5 million dollars that we're going to have to issue a bank note for. So that's coming up for the next budget. So I know we all like to do all these wonderful things, but you gotta think financially of where the money's gonna come from.
Keep your foot on the brake, right?
Do the chair? Regarding a bank note, William, would it be possible if it's done its preliminary steps, uh, for the notes? I, I mean, how, that's already going, right? That's, or are we on hold right now where we can maybe wait to decide on?
Well, no, no, the, the bank note, it's still, it's still gonna, it's, it's, it's gonna be part of next year's budget.
Okay.
Cause we're not, what you're gonna see the next time is part, is just the first phase, the design for the, uh, for the golf course renovation. Once we have that, we'll issue an RFP for the actual renovation work so that we can get an idea of how much the whole project is gonna cost. And I'll come back to you and say, we need to borrow this much.
Right.
To cover this project. What you're talking about is adding the cost of this to the loan.
Yeah, and not only that, the, 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 the renovations that are gonna take place at the golf course, we've got to make sure that everything clicks together. Cause you might be renovating something and then something triggers with their plan. So.
Yeah, this, yeah, yeah. And that's why we want to talk to Paul because I don't know this area where the archery is involved in the renovation.
Hey, Paul, by the way.
It is. It is.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
I, can I just say one last thing? As, as much as they are in need of improvement, we've already got racquetball courts and they're at the tennis center right now. And I feel like moving, moving the racquetball courts, I, I think that we had talked about doing racquetball at Stafford Park. We set aside some money. Uh, and I feel like we should use that earmarked money to do pickleball and then just keep doing racquetball where it is for the time being, where it's been for the last 40 years.
Ever.
And, uh, and, you know, and then talk about that down the line. Cause I, I don't think we should.
Well, I would like to see the plan for the boat, you know, the whole concept of, let's see where the racquetball would be. Because the idea would be whether we do it right now or if we do it down the road is, and it's, and, and it is an embarrassment if you've gone to those racquetball courts. I mean, they, the, I know you hit the ball and plaster comes out and, and there's only so much, my understanding is of replastering that you can do.
It's pretty bad.
But, but let's, I would like to see at least the plan of where the pickleball would be, where the racquetball would be. Um, you know, the whole concept, see how that works. The one other thing I wanted to mention is we had talked initially about a pilot project at the tennis courts of taking one court and turning it into pickleball and making it available so that that's already something. And I understand Manny's concerns that then we're taking away tennis from.
Yeah, no.
So I'm not necessarily pushing that one way or the other because I think we're making progress with, you know, um, our, I, I think our initiative here is to create pickleball in the city. And if it can't be right away, that's, you know, so be it. But, um, does anyone have any thought about that or?
I, 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 I think that should probably be dismissed from our, from the equation, uh, the fact that we would, we would attempt to do that. Turn one of the tennis courts into a pickleball. I, I, I think that's off the table here. At least, at least that's what I'm hearing. Um, and I wouldn't be in favor of that either.
As long as, as long as the plan that has pickleball and racquetball at the golf course can be, you know, seen as two phases and with, with the associated cost.
Correct. I think, I think through the chair, I think what I'd like to see, if you, if you don't mind me mentioning, is, is that, uh, I'd like to see two presentations, if you don't mind, Omar, sorry for the work, but one, one, one presentation with just the pickleball presentation. And then another presentation with the racquetball going over there as, as a second option, you know, or.
Well, more what I would meant with the racquetball. No, I would like to see the cost and get an idea, but also visually see where we're talking about space, how that, you know, um, you know, we're seriously talking about both things and, you know, neither thing hopefully will be off, you know, 50 years from now, it'll be sooner than that. So we should have a, a really good concept of, and, and it'd be nice to tell residents when we're building something, this is where this is. And, you know, the plan down the road will be, you know, um, so far the city has been able to do this, you know, with the new, um, recreation center, the new pool, the new, um, like a community, um, adult community center, senior center. And, you know, we keep moving along and, and improving things for the community. So I, I think this is doable.
Very good.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Omar.
Omar, baseball Wednesday. Tell your boys.
Tomorrow and Thursday, unless they change it.
Trinity Christian Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yeah. According to Fanshawe. Now, that could change overnight.
I'll text them tonight.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thanks, pal.
Good work on the, um, on the quote to get the community center repainted. What a savings.
That was, uh, Suzelle.
Suzelle? Oh my gosh. I'm gonna go give her a hug.
COVID restricted hug from a distance. Bye, goodnight.
Good night.
Mayor, before we go to the last, I, uh, there's a Pastor Lugo is in the audience. Uh, he missed the, um, the open forum, but he would just like to say a few words quickly about an upcoming event he's having.
Sure. Come on up, Pastor. Welcome.
Oh, I pray, I pray. Okay, my English is, uh, sorry, it's slow. Mayor, Council, and I have a message from the Miami Baptist Association. I am a pastor for 52 years, uh, 28 in Cuba and after here, 24. Uh, you have the honor to have the first Spanish Baptist church from political ex-prisoner politic from Cuba here. In 1994, Reverend Medina, um, make a church in the facility of Miami Spring Baptist Church. And growing after we are pastor in Cuba, I came here to be pastor in this church. to be pastor in this church. And nineteen two, in two thousand seven, we moved to All Angels Episcopal School. And for thirteen years was here. And now we are in sunny, in passes special, but we continue here because we love Miami Springs. And the next five, May five will be the day of a prayer for the nation in all the churches. It will be the, the, the day we will be in, in, in the front praying for you. And because every day you are trying to, to be good for this community. And it's very hard. I understand. I hear how you has to taking everybody. But I think that the faith is the more important for, for your life. Jesus God is very important. It is not out to every day. It is inside to us and it's with us. We need that this country remember how born over the Bible. And the, our pioneers, they put this in to Jesus and the Bible in this country. And this is the wonderful for Miami Springs and for any place in the world. God never forget it. If our children, we pray for the teacher, we pray for the officer, the officer, the last week, one has a big problem. Accident. Guzman is my friend and Alonso and we know somebody from you. For many years, we are here in Miami Springs. We want to continue here because it's a wonderful city. We pray for every city sent in here in this country neighborhood. February twenty-fifth, December twenty-fifth, we are singing in the Gasebo, or maybe you remember our choir, you hear. And we want to say that we pray for you. We've prayed for you. We pray for everybody. And we want to you have the main clear for shore or the problem that the community have. And this is too many. We are praying right now for Ukraine, suffering for the same philosophy that we suffer in many of our orders. And God bless you. Thank you for giving me, this is for you. I put this is in your hand. I graduated the last year for Chaplain in Miami Baptist Association. I am in disposition to pray for anybody that have problem. I go into every hospital here. Anybody that has problem with families, with officer that need praise, please call me and God bless you, everybody.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Pastor.
I've been trying to help them over the last couple of weeks, finding new homes since All Angels has been the but I know you talked to the Lions Club about using their facility.
Yes, I see a woman and see the Baptist house. And then, you know, the Baptist Convention is thinking maybe they wants to buy place because it's the best that the Spanish people have the same that older churches in the world. Yes. In Miami or all the, the United States. Now pray for us. We are praying for you on the May five. Remember, we will be in the front praying for this city.
Thank you, Pastor.
William, through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Pastor, you were using the lunchroom area of All Angels. Is that, is that where you were providing yourself?
Okay. No, I'm, I'm just remembering that a week, a year ago, January, in the middle of COVID, my son was doing an Eagle Scout project. On the other side of the cafeteria, it was a dirt area. We put a bunch of pavers. La Plazaleta. That was us. And yes, my son and the Boy Scouts and the people that were there from the church. You know, the kids love the sandwiches and because you always had food at your events. So, so thank you for that and be praying for you guys.
Anything that we can do for everybody. I am from this city because it's and I don't think it can move to other places.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, let's go to new business. I think I'm still in following some side order here, eleven A.
Yeah, it's open.
This is, yeah. This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, establishing establishing a payment in lieu of parking fee pursuant to section one fifty oh seven oh point one, Miami Springs Overlay Gateway District of the city's Code of Ordinances, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date. You have a memo that was prepared in front of you by our city planner. This basically deals with the, as you remember in the Gateway Overlay District, there was a fee that was supposed to be set by council for any parking spaces that off, off-street parking spaces that will be required for a project to meet their parking requirements. And we've given you some examples of what other cities are at and our staff is recommending that the city council adopt the attached resolution establishing the fee in the district at twenty thousand dollars per space. The fee should be monitored and adjusted by city council from time to time. As you can see, we have given you some examples. Miami Beach is at forty thousand. Coral Gables is at forty-two thousand. Bay Harbor Islands is twenty thousand. We found other cities that do not have a similar fee.
Commercial driven here, right? Commercial, yeah.
Correct.
And I think this is mentioned in the memo, but this is specifically to be able to, the, the fee is based on the construction costs of building these types of parking facilities.
I, I think this is too low. I think the cities that have these in place, you know, things have changed, prices have gone up dramatically, though they're likely be raising these fees, whatever, you know, Miami Beach and City of Miami and stuff have. And I think giving away a parking space, selling, allowing use of, I don't know what term we use. Based on the information we've gotten now from the Economic Development Task Force where they keep, you know, basically screaming parking, parking, parking. And we're going to experience an impact on available parking based on this new building that's going up that, you know, is already going to use up a lot of public parking that isn't being used right now by the residents that are going to be living there or the businesses that are going to be there. I think we could go thirty thousand at least. And if it's, if, you know, if a business doesn't want to pay that, they don't have to. It's just an option for them. But I don't think we need to, to have a fire sale on parking in this area, given the information, the feedback that we've gotten this past year from residents and businesses and the task force.
Well, the, the, the twenty thousand that was recommended is certainly a start. I, I, I don't, I don't think that, again, I don't know how much more development we're looking at in that part of town either to this, to this extent relative to parking.
But how much more parking do we have to sell either?
We have a lot. The trouble is it's all over the place.
Well, that's, and it has to be near there, near the gateway district.
Mayor, I have a question for, for William. So this is twenty thousand per space for how, for fifty-three, which is what, how many spaces?
Well, if you're using the, the example of the One Curtis Parkway, it was about fifty-something spaces. So at this, it will be over a million dollars.
It would be one point oh six.
Yeah.
Right. But, but so is this just, so this is just establishing a parking fee? This is not establishing what the one-time fee that the, the developer at One Curtis Parkway has to pay?
I think that's separate. So this resolution is strictly a general resolution of general applicability to.
Right.
Let's say you have a future project that comes up, say on Canal Street. And their parking requirement based on what they're building is a hundred spaces. And they're only providing fifty on, onsite. That means the other fifty that would have to pay whatever this fee is, should be twenty thousand times fifty, another a million dollars if they wanted to build that project.
And it's not like they have to do that. They have the choice of providing their own parking for the facility. This is an availability that we're making available to them that if, should they want to buy some parking so that they have to construct. So it's, it's not.
Why can't we set that fee on a case-by-case basis as development?
So you can, I think part of the, the flexibility that you have and you're adopting this by resolution. So you can always, it's, it's much more easy to revise a resolution and revise the fee. So if, I, I think, if, if, if the council wanted to adopt this resolution this evening and hearing the mayors and others' concerns about whether this fee is appropriate based on what we all know of rising costs of, of construction, et cetera, then we could adopt this fee at twenty thousand tonight. And then at a future meeting, even next month, come back and have a revised fee. That's the flexibility you have with doing this by resolution.
So, but, okay, so with One Curtis Parkway, the, we have to set a fee for them for the on-street parking, right? The, and we haven't established that fee yet.
Is that, that, that.
I know that that's something different, but that is.
That's done.
That's done.
And it's not like if we set this fee now, they're going to have to pay this fee. This is for future developments from whatever this passes forward.
But it strikes me that like for future development, the fee should be, because this is something that we talked about, right? I think you had mentioned when when Jose was here, that you mentioned about can it be like on a sliding scale? I, I feel like the fee should be relative to the total number of spaces that we have at that time in terms of what they're asking for. Like you, I think you had mentioned to Jose, like, can it be on a sliding scale? Like the first X amount would be so much, like it strikes me that, that going forward, if a developer needs fifty spaces, it should be at that time, well, like fifty out of how many do we have available? Right? So I'm not understanding if, if that's a separate negotiation that's done with the developer, why, why do we need to have a resolution about a fee now if, if, in essence, we would be taking it on a case-by-case basis? When, when a developer asks for a certain number of spaces relative to what we have available at that time? And also relative to the cost at that time. I just don't see why this is necessary.
I think if the fee has changed at that time, you could at the same meeting as you're approving the project. If, if the data supports changing the fee, then you could adopt a resolution that evening or whenever the meeting is held, changing what the fee amount is. And, and it would be of general applicability based on the data at that time of what you know construction costs are, costs of acquiring property in order to do this. I think I, I, I didn't, we didn't really get involved, my office, in, in establishing what the fee should be. So I think Chris is the one who did that. I, Chris is the one who did that analysis. So maybe he can speak to the amount and here, how he arrived at that number. But I, I think.
But I think also a higher fee, it's easier for us to negotiate and say, okay, we'll lessen the fee, you know, based on what you're saying and the desirability of the project. And, you know, we'll correct me if I'm wrong, Heidi, and then say, you know, okay, we have it at thirty thousand. We will allow for this project to be twenty thousand based on, you know, whatever.
Mayor, I also don't think that.
I, I can certainly go back and look. To, I can certainly want the way that it seems to me like if we're already saying twenty and then we're telling this builder, no, but we want you to pay thirty. That's not going to go over well because wait a minute, you say twenty and now you're like blackmailing us or strong R and D us for more. Whereas if we have a higher established price and we feel like, you know, this is worthwhile project and we want it, then we could say, all right, based on this, we will, you know, they could come to us and say, we would like to, instead of thirty thousand per space, twenty thousand. But I've, I've seen this twenty thousand in the past years ago, when, you know, way before the pandemic and all, and there's no way the cost haven't gone up.
And also, Mayor, I don't think, I don't think that it's, I don't think that it's arbitrary either, right? I think that municipalities that are charging a lot more, it's because they don't have a lot of parking, right? So I feel like in order for us to, I'd like to hear from the city planner about how this number was derived. And, and, and again, I, I feel like, because this is a question that came up when we had our workshop, is, is how many spaces? And I know that we were asking for a grant where there was going to be a more robust parking study. Like I feel if we're going to set a number, it's got to be, and obviously, everything is contextualized when you set that number, but I, it's, it's also relative again to the number of spaces that you have. And I, you know, it, because, you know, and not to kind of rehash things, right? But the, the development of One Curtis Parkway has a sign right now that, you know, like, you know, say, hey, you have rent here and says ample street parking, like it's literally one of the bullets. Right? So I know that the, the parking study that was done said that they needed fifty-three spaces, but we don't, we don't know. We don't know what fifty-three is. It's fifty-three is a subset of X, the number of spots that we have. We also don't know if there's going to be more. Well, we're not, I feel like this is, this is an issue that I, I would want more information. I mean, rather than just saying, I think it's low, but rather than just saying like, I think it needs to be higher. I feel like we need to have more information about what's the number and how we came to this number and, and what, what, what goes into that equation so that we can, we can talk about like, you know, this, this represents, you know, each space out of X amount of spaces that we have available.
All right, Chris is on if you want to.
Chris, are you on?
I am here.
Okay. What, what, what are your thoughts?
Well, a couple of things. So some of the, the fees that you see like in Miami Beach and Coral Gables, they are established in determining what it would cost to construct a parking space in a parking garage. And that's typically around forty, forty-two thousand dollars, sometimes as high as forty-five. The, the big unknown is that is land acquisition cost. What are you paying for the land to put that garage on? So that's kind of an unknown. If the city already owns the land, that makes it a little simpler. Our fee was established because we're not ready for a parking garage. I don't think we need a parking garage. Our fee was established in determining how we could purchase some land perhaps or create surface parking, surface parking lot, surface, not parking garage. And maybe it's also just as simple as improving the lighting and the signage and the striping and the attractiveness of some of the parking space, parking lots that we have, which are frankly not very welcoming or good-looking. I'm thinking particularly the parking lot behind Starbucks. A lot of people don't even know that's there. So some of that twenty thousand, I think is more than sufficient to do the things that we need to do at this time. The, the, the other thing to think about is since this would be parking variances, these, each applicant, let me say one other thing. If we start to do the thirty, the forty, forty-five thousand dollars, we're, we're looking for development. We're a little hungry for some, someone to come in and do some new things in our city. And a price tag of an additional million dollars or a million dollars more, that could just end their interest in the city right out of the bat. It's just, that could just scare them away. So William and I discussed it and, and you know, we talked about a fee that we thought was reasonable, that would start to be able to accumulate in, into a separate held fund. And then use that over time to, to do the things that we need to do. Again, that may be just fixing up parking lots, or maybe it's buying some properties to create surface parking lots, things like that. The other thing is because these are, these by nature are going to be parking variances, these projects will come to you as a council. And the idea of a case-by-case, that's where this could come into play, that you say, well, here's the situation. There are a few spaces short. And there's plenty of parking nearby. We'll make this twenty thousand and someone else may come to you and have a larger number like on Thirty-Sixth Street with really nowhere to go. There's no place to park around Thirty-Sixth Street except on the private properties. That's where you may want to in charge a higher fee that, that you could then do parking garage, either a joint venture with the developer on their property or on a property nearby or purchase a surface parking. on their property or on a property nearby, or purchase a surface parking lot and then finally build a garage. So you're in the driver's seat on that one. You have the ability to look at each case and say, this is what we think the fee is. Is a reasonable fee in this situation for this project. And then that's gonna come down to a lot of factors like. Is this something that we're really looking for? If it's um Joe's used cars, you probably don't wanna really spend a whole lot of uh of time working on that. If it's a Whole Foods or something that's coming along and just can't make their parking numbers work. That's when you could determine what's the desirability of that. All those factors are gonna come into play in helping you determine what an appropriate fee is at that time for that use.
Chris, what was the fee that we uh charged the theater property developer?
Well, we didn't. And one of the reasons that we didn't, unfortunately, is because we never had established the fee. We talked about a parking impact fee, but since there were no fee established, it was not applicable to them. And Williams is right, that that one's done. Their their permits are issued. We can't go back to them now and say, well, you owe us a million dollars. In hindsight, I guess we wish that we had established a fee and charged them something. Um, but we didn't, but thi- this is to close the barn doors and make sure that as we go forward. We're we're gonna be able to do this properly and have a number that you are are all gonna be satisfied with.
But going back to that, and and I know I've talked with Heidi with this, I and we'll revisit that because it's not this, but what the ordinance says is that we will establish a parking fee. We never got around to establishing it, so now that we're establishing it, the property is not finished. I don't understand why. We can't pass that on, you know, and bill them now when the property is finished and we've established a parking fee.
Well, they have their permit. Their their permits are issued. They're they're under construction. They're they're, you can't really go back and renegotiate a done deal.
Through the chair? I I think that it it was actually left open-ended, so they went into the permit with an open-ended statement on the resolution. So I think there's still room for negotiation.
I mean, I defer to our attorneys on that one. I'm not.
Heidi was gonna say something.
Sorry.
Through the chair.
I'm sorry, you were gonna say. Heidi's say what you were gonna say, so you started talking.
It's okay, I can wait.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd like to uh make a re- a motion that we approve Resolution eleven A as written.
Uh, through the chair, I'll be happy to second that, uh, but for discussion before we vote.
Have a second, is there a discussion?
For discussion, I'd like to go along with what the mayor mentioned earlier and go to twenty-five on it. I won't go thirty, I'll go twenty-five.
I'll accept the amendment.
You have my second, sir.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Before I comment, I Heidi, what did you wanna say? Because you want, and I wanna know what you're gonna say before I.
Have lots of things to say that I'm thinking, um. I I think it's it's oh, it's long past due to adopt a resolution setting the fee, so I think you should adopt a fee. I think that any fee that you adopt has to be supported by data on what the fee should be. So I think that um, I I don't think that the twenty-five is that far off from the twenty and frankly, I think it's justified by by what we all know are construction costs and land costs, so I'm not terribly concerned about that. What I'm more concerned about is this concept of changing the fee each time a different developer comes before us. So legally, while I'm happy to look at that, it does that, that concept does cause me a little heartburn and pause, yes. Uh, so I I think, however, that the way you address that is you can review this fee annually, monthly, however frequently you want. Um, and I think that it probably should be reviewed at least annually because many fees and and costs change, so I I think that that's probably the appropriate thing to do.
So Mayor, and and I get, I get what Chris is saying, right? That he's he's looking at this in terms of like what the cost is to uh to maintain these parking spaces and to add things to kind of augment the parking, but at the end of the day, as he mentioned, that this is a parking variance and you're you're gonna, you had mentioned giving away, you are, you are conceding city, street parking to a developer who doesn't have enough parking. And there's a cost associated with that, and whether we're using it to maintain it, I I feel like it's a cost, and I felt like that was part of the ordinance. When when the uh Kurt- one Curtis Parkway was approved on, I mean, it was part of the ordinance and the fact that we didn't establish the fee because it didn't, we didn't have it, you know, that that's something that we have to deal with. But I feel like there's, there's more to, maybe I'm wrong, I'm not a city planner, right? Uh, but uh to me, I feel like there's more to it than, you know, you a developer is going to provide the city with money that we can then use to uh embellish or augment those spaces. Those spaces are being given up for uh to a developer, like in the case of one Curtis Parkway for overnight parking. Um, and I feel like the, again, I feel like the fee for conceding city parking to a developer uh has to be uh has to be in, you know, in relation to how many spa- parking spaces the city has available.
I agree with you, and I think another thing is you mentioned, you know, there's that we're talking about the cost of maintaining a parking space, but what about the consequence? Of giving that parking space away, that we're taking away parking spaces from other businesses, from uh, you know, from anyone who wants to and and all of us know right now with the pandemic, and this has totally changed since before. Um, this was approved, the town center project was approved, is since the pandemic, people, I've said this before, are working at home. The people are working remotely, so the number of people that are working remotely, the number of cars that are going to be parked there. When we first were talking about the one Curtis Parkway development, the what was presented to us was that you know, um, the the residents would be leaving for work, and that's when the businesses would use those parking spaces. And then the businesses would close down in the late afternoons, and that's when the residents would come home, and that's no longer the case. Residents are gonna have their car parked there twenty-four seven until the third day when they decide they wanna go out for lunch, or that's the day they go into the office and the rest of the time it'll be there. So it's a whole different, just from even that perspective, um, I I would say. I think we need to give this a lot more thought, and the the twenty thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand still seems like a pittance to me for what um, you know, what even Chris is saying, well, we could buy more land. Well, how would we buy more land? Land is extremely expensive, not that it's available. Perhaps if we were um out in Doral, where, you know, there seems to be land all the way to Collier County that's available to them. You know, they can get more, but where are we going to buy? Not that we can afford to buy more land, because land is so expensive right now, you know, single-family home is is councilwoman. Um, Bravo can tell us is, you know, practically a million dollars. So there's so many issues here that just don't, I don't, I don't think they jive yet. There and the, you know, and even the twenty or the thirty, and I'm just going thirty because twenty seems so cheap, but I don't even know if that's well thought out, you know, we probably, my suggestion would be, let's get more information.
You have a motion and a second, Mayor.
Said, and let's figure out what, you know, realistically, what we're giving away. And I can't, I'm gonna say giveaway, what we're negotiating to allow public parking because um the thought of someone having, you know, their two cars parked out there in front of their, you know, in our public parking uh for two or three days in a row because they're not going anywhere and they're working remote, um, and a whole bunch of those residents doing that. I don't think this is going to work real well.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
You know, Madam Chair, I am not unsympathetic. I mean, I agree with you. I've had the same sentiments about how this thing was done, right? A lot of it in in terms of the uh of the uh Kurt- uh one Curtis Parkway uh situation. But, you know, I came here tonight to vote things up or down, and and there's a motion on the floor. And and we could vote on it, and if we voted down, then we voted down, but uh I'd like for us to have a vote.
Okay, well, we're still in the discussion phase.
Yeah, no, but I'm 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 calling, I'm calling uh at some point, right? Now, maybe I'll just put my parliamentary hat for a minute, right? There is a vote, I mean, there is a motion on the floor. It's been seconded, we've had a lot of discussions, in fact, other discussions that even though they kind of have something to do with this, are not. And and at some point, I think we have the at least.
We will be have a vote, councilman, but right now we're in the discussion phase.
I think, Mayor, I'm sorry, the, I think the councilman did ask for the vote to be called.
That's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for uh for, I'm calling the question.
Can't we have a discussion before we call the vote? Don't I have the prerogative to continue the discussion? It's asked for the questions to be called, Mayor. All right, call the vote.
Miss Mayor Fohad?
No.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilwoman Bravo?
I I don't even know what we're voting on.
So we have something in the books.
Uh, Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
No.
The motion fails.
Okay, do we want to continue discussion on this to give our city attorney some direction as to what we want for the next meeting or as soon as possible?
I think so.
Sure.
Yeah, yes.
Do the chair, I'm sorry, because I couldn't discuss it before. Um, this is a lifetime fee, so this parking space would be deeded to the developer, correct?
No.
No.
So how is this fee? Is there ending to it? Is it a one-time fee for a certain amount of time?
The way that it has been proposed by staff, it's a one-time fee. Did I understand that correctly, Chris?
Correct.
It it's a one. One time, you pay it generally as a condition of your site plan approval. It would be a condition in the resolution saying uh the required parking for this project is X. The parking being provided is Y, the uh parking being used. The 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 in lieu of street parking being provided is Z, and therefore the fee, the applicable fee is.
I got that, but it, the developer now owns that parcel.
No.
No, no ownership that is invasion.
There, it isn't.
No ownership.
This is city property, aren't we talking about city property?
Okay.
You just, you approved, you approved a property that didn't have enough parking, and based on a study of how many parking spaces they were short, you approved the project uh with the understanding that it would, you would just, they would be using street parking, so you're basically allowing a property to use.
But it's city property, so yeah, I think there's not.
They can park anywhere, anywhere.
Not one spot.
We're allowing the developer to say, my understanding is we're allowing the developer to say, we have all, you can park all along here and leave your car there overnight. Um, and you know, along, say, if we're using the example of Canal Street.
For a lifetime.
Yeah. That he could, that can be a selling point of the project. Yes, we have some parking here, and we also have, you can keep your cars down here and and Heidi, let me ask you with this, with Canal Street, for example. Um, we can't come back and say, once we've done this, and we've certainly done it already for this project. We can't come back and say parking, you know, um, no, no overnight parking.
There's nothing to stop you from changing your code.
Can we do that?
As a matter of fact, uh, that was one of the uh recommendations from uh Councilman Petrolanda, when he was on council. Remember, and we said we were gonna wait till the project was done and uh see how how the parking situation got, and one of the things he had mentioned was putting no overnight parking along Canal Street on both sides.
There's nothing to stop.
To the extent, if you don't, if you don't mind, uh, sorry, Counselor, to the extent, uh, to add on to uh, attached to what William just said, to the extent of having a shuttle service taking folks uh to the airport and leaving their car on Canal Street for two weeks. A- and getting shuttled to the airport. Now, who's gonna do that? I mean, that's what I, that was my thought at the time. I mean, who?
Do the chair, didn't we talk about um just paid parking, like meter parking? So there's nothing to stop the city from implementing a parking program, whether paid or otherwise. The the options you have continue to remain available to you. And if as a, if as a result of establishing this parking fee, you have your separate account with this parking fund that you later want to acquire property, build a parking garage, and have it be a municipal parking garage that like in other cities you pay hourly or daily, you've seen that in Miami Beach, you've seen it in Coral Gables, and those are municipal parking garages. There's nothing to stop you from doing that. That's actually one of the things that you could do as a result of this. But there there's nothing to say that the ten parking spaces that are closest to a given development that uses this program, that those are that development's project. That's absolutely not what this is. So this is just saying, your development, and let's just take a pretend development. The co- the city codes parking requirements require you to provide a hundred parking spaces. Let's just use that example. This developer, for whatever reason, in this makeup, make-believe uh scenario, can only provide ninety parking spaces on site. The city, through its ordinance, has said, we want to help you by allowing you to utilize this parking in lu- payment in lieu of parking program. So those ten spaces that you're short, you are going to pay this fee. And the city is supposed to use that fee to construct parking or improve its parking facilities.
Okay, but there's no.
Let me ask you this, if if I was a developer and I came now and I said, oh, okay, for twenty thousand, and so I'm going to pay you for ten parking spaces at twenty thousand, and that way I don't have to build two parking spaces per unit, just one. And then, and I build this unit, and I build these residents, and I tell the residents you know, look, all this along Canal Street, you can park along there, and two years later, we come back and we say, no, we're only gonna let you park. Um, you know, no parking after eleven P M. I would sue the city saying, wait a minute, I just sold all these condominiums, telling the people, and I paid twenty thousand dollars per parking space to have that. That's what I'm saying, I just don't understand how down the road that wouldn't come back to hurt us. Because we, they paid us for, it's not that they're just saying, yes, you have Canal Street, like right now, you know, anyone who has a a property on Canal Street can say, look, we've got plenty of parking. We've basically sold them parking spaces.
We sold it, we sold them off-street parking. We didn't sell them parking on Canal Street or on Westwood or on off-street.
I understand, William, but I just don't see how, I'm putting myself in the place of the developer. I would feel like I just paid you twenty thousand dollars and sold my condominiums. Or sold my apartments, let's, let's do it the other way. Um, with this latest bill that just came down the Senate. Um, you know, I have apartment buildings, and now I can't lease some as apartment buildings with, you know, uh, plenty of on-street parking overnight because the city has said, you know, no, you can't park after midnight. Well, you know, that's impacting their revenues that they had for three years. I, there's something here, I I I don't know. I think we have to give it a lot more thought.
Mayor, I think it would be helpful if perhaps working with staff, we can get additional information on those sliding scales that you asked about. Um, I think that there's other cities that have a fee that gets paid upfront, and I'm not positive about this. So don't hold me to it, but there's fees that get paid upfront, and then later there are adjustments depending on the needs. Um, so I think that that research needs to be done, and we can bring that back, but I think you you do need to set a fee at some point.
Do the chair.
We need to do, set it, we needed to have said it with this developer, and we didn't.
I just don't.
Yeah, I know, but kind of a big oversight.
I don't think this is a question for you, but I think long-term, right? As far as revenue, I don't know if it'd be wise to set a fee. Or we should just go straight meter parking. I think the volume at the end would be more than just giving it to them for thirty thousand dollars.
You can do both.
You can do both.
Yeah.
Yeah. There could be a fluctuation of of of.
There's nothing to prevent the city from implementing a a a paid parking system, where whether it's in a garage setting or whether it's just regular street parking like what you have.
I get that, but what's the point of selling?
Look at the example of Miami Beach and Coral Gable. They charge the fee, but it's all paid parking.
Right.
There are meters or.
Okay, so you could do both.
You can do both, sure.
And you restrict, like what the mayor was saying? Can you take money from a developer and say that you're doing a parking variance, and they get off-street parking, but then we put a sign that says no overnight parking? So can you do that? I don't, I don't see how you could do that to a developer and not.
That's saying, um, you know, the price that you pay for parking does not mean that the parking regulations will stay the same in the future, or they may vary.
What's the answer to the question? Can you do that?
Would need to confirm, but I don't see an issue with it.
I think, I think this needs to be a little further looked into, uh, obviously, I'm gonna withdraw my uh the thing that I mentioned before, and I will tell, yeah, but I'm gonna tell you this right now. There's no way on God's green earth that I will ever vote for public parking meters. There's no way on God's green earth that I will ever vote for public parking meters in this town, ever. As long as I'm sitting up here and I swear that to you.
Through the chair. Just wanted to highlight a point that you made earlier. I think it's very important. And I've been listening to um, some radio and and reading some things that have impacted business in the United States since COVID. And you're absolutely right that there's been a tendency for more people to work from home. Some large corporations actually have embraced the idea. Keeps, of course, it keeps their costs down in 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 other ways in terms of, you know, use of space and so forth, that that is changing the complexity of cars moving and so forth and so on, which I think is not going to go away even when we totally eradicate COVID. But that there's a trend in some, in some part of commerce in this country in that direction. So I think it's important. You you raise a really good point that needs to be thought about as a, not only now, but you know, moving forward. Uh, what does that mean for our business community in in the city? And uh, we need to, you know, keep that, keep that in mind and um, and not lose sight of it. Because this is not just, I think that a lot of the emotions that I feel have have to do with One Curtis Parkway.
Yeah.
And and all the ramifications. I'm with you. I'm with you on that.
Uh, through the chair, just uh, Victor, if 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 I might respond, or Councilman Vasquez, if I might respond to that. I think just the opposite in effect uh, with the COVID and the pandemic, as you're mentioning, with people working from home. Let's say they live in Miami Springs and they're working from home. Well, they're home. That means they can come up to Mylums, they can come to the, there's going to be more of a demand from people working at home than there would be otherwise with them going to work in Coral Gables or Doral or wherever.
No, no, I think that the point that I think the mayor was, maybe I was, maybe a misunderstanding is that um, you have fifty-three, what is it, fifty-one, fifty-one units? Um, you know, I stay home, my car's in front of my house, right? Yeah, you know, go, I run out to Mylum and, you know.
There you go.
But but um, but uh, in in the case, in the case of uh, One Curtis Parkway, you're talking about cars being there, you know, where commerce is too. I think that's what you're saying. But all I'm saying is that just, you know, these are all elements that we need, and probably beyond the life of our, you know, membership in this august body that we need to take into consideration and make the best decision possible.
I have.
Moving forward.
Two, two things, Mayor and Council. One is I don't want to um, shut the door on the possibility of the fee being applied to the One Curtis Parkway project. Um, that is something that I am continuing to look at.
Thank you, Heidi.
Um, so I I don't want that to be shut down. It's not a sure thing, but I I do want to make sure that that's clear.
Wiggle.
The other thing is, and I I was hoping that perhaps Chris could help me um, help you and the community understand how the actual reduction or in lieu of parking works. I think, and Chris, jump in here at any time. I think that the way that he or any planner reviews this is there has to be some kind of parking that is provided on site. Um, I'm I'm not sure of any situations where there's no parking on site, although there are cities that don't have a parking requirement, by the way. Um, but I think if if you use a a mixed-use building, for example, that has that residential component and has the retail component. I think when Chris is doing his analysis, he's ensuring that there is sufficient parking for the residents so that you don't have the concerns of the overnight parking uh, by residents. So what you're really using that off-street park or on-street parking for is for the retail component. Is that how you see it, Chris?
Yes, exactly.
During op- during hours of operation.
Yeah. Chris, I think that comes back to this point of, you know, if you're working and I know, I think I brought this up at the last council meeting, a sixty-minute segment that was this year said seven percent, the um, what was it? Before COVID, sixty-seven percent of the jobs were, you know, in the office. Right, and um, now, since COVID, as of now, not during nineteen twenty and twenty-one, as of now, it's like seven percent. It was something, the the change was, and they said, we expect, you know, more than seven percent will eventually go back to the office, but it'll never be the other way. So I I, that to me is, you know, I, there are days when, you know, the car doesn't have to be moved and you can walk, you're right, Councilman Best. You can walk to Mylums, you can walk to the restaurant, you can walk to this. I'm not going to move my car because I'm going to lose the space. It's easier to walk the two blocks and, you know, I've got a great space. So there's I I don't know. I know we have to establish a parking fee and I understand that. Um, I am glad to hear that you're looking at ways to make sure that what is in writing, that we would establish a parking fee and they would pay us for that property, that that will follow through with that. But with this, I understand we have to establish a parking fee because we still haven't. I'm just not sure that we are all in agreement as to what it should be and how, you know, what steps, is it just a parking fee and that's it? And Chris negotiates it or, you know, is it parking fee based on like Councilman Fajad said? You know, um, now we only have this many parking spaces left and, you know, we had we had a hundred and now we're only down to seventy and now with this next project, we're only down to sixty and each time the parking space I would think gets more valuable, has to be, should be.
I I think that's when you, again, when you change the actual fee amount.
I think, Mayor, if if the, if the concern here is the amount of the fee, if you want to set it at forty, set it at forty. I mean, that has, either way, it has, I know your concern, uh, Councilman Fajad, about number of spaces available and all. But the fee is the fee. You have forty thousand dollar fee and then, uh, you know, that can be changed at any time by council.
Yeah, but again, as you had mentioned earlier, Mr. Manager, you don't want to chase po- potential developers.
Well, that's, that's, that's the thing. I mean, the other way to go is not set a fee and just tell every developer that comes in.
Case by case.
Have to provide onsite parking, period.
That's an option.
And I think most developers, you know, um, I would guess if the parking fee is forty dollars, I mean, forty thousand, that they still understand this is, the whole thing is negotiating because they're negotiating for the wiggle room to increase density. That's the whole purpose of the gateway um, overview district or whatever. What is it, gateway?
No.
The gateway overlay.
Overlay, thank you. District, right? So that there's a negotiation in place as to how many, how they accrue points for enhancements and all this. So I would think any savvy developer would say, okay, you know, we can probably negotiate, there's forty thousand dollars per parking space, but you know.
But that is separate from the, the parking.
B.
Right, the the parking doesn't get you bonus points.
No, but the two things that can be negotiated are density, increased density by lowering the the floor area ratio and parking variances. Those are the two things in the overlay ordinance that they're allowed to negotiate with the city. Um, so that's something that we need to go, I, I'm sorry, but to me, I don't feel like, I I get that we got to set a parking fee. Maybe I just, you know, fell off the back of the pumpkin truck. I I was still under the impression that we were going to set a fee that would be applied to the One Curtis Parkway property because that's what it said in the ordinance. So the fact that we just discussed, you know, until you kind of walked it back a little bit, that like, well, that ship had sailed. Like, that's, that's a humongous deal to me. Like, I, that, I find that shocking. So I I don't feel like, I even I feel like I want more information about about that and what our options are, because those are, that's fifty-three spaces that we already did a variance on. Uh, which even a twenty thousand, that would have been one point oh six million. Um, like, I I, that's a huge deal to me.
Do the chair. Just to give you an idea, not that, uh, eight years ago, I sold two properties downtown Duro and I sold with those units. Um, there was one, and this was already eight years ago. I sold one for fifteen thousand and I believe the other one was for twenty-five thousand. And because it was within the development, because, you know, the unit was two, three bedrooms, that they had, they needed an extra parking space. So I think the developers also work with the occupancy of the unit. And I think there's some sort of a negotiation standpoint, depending on what unit is being purchased, that would also default the the price of that parking space. So it would fluctuate. I don't know, we maybe want to open ourselves to more options instead of just saying, this is the price.
I think that's what we're saying, that if we establish it high, we can decide to go down, but I feel if we establish it low, it's kind of hard to say, nah, but we've changed our minds. We really want double, you know, uh.
I don't, everything's inflated from eight years ago. That was twenty thousand dollars eight years ago.
William, I'm sorry, what were the cities that you mentioned? I should have written them down for the parking space.
Should have what?
The amounts of the cities that you said.
Cities that you mentioned.
It's in the memo that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but um, just to give you an example, Miami Beach is at uh, forty thousand. City of Miami is forty-five thousand. Coral Gables is at forty-two thousand. And Bay Harbor Islands is twenty thousand.
How much, twenty? I think what Maria proposed was fair.
Yeah, Bay, Bay Harbor Islands would be more of us. The the other three are kind of not applicable in a way because of the size of them versus us. But Bay Harbor Islands would be, yeah.
So I guess, where do we want to go? Do we want to table it till next meeting? So we all have a little better look at it?
Through the chair, I I don't think that, I I don't think it's going to hurt us to do that. Um, I think uh, council has heard uh, all of our input on this and as well as Chris, uh, the city planner and William. Um, I I I think, yeah, I think we should put it off till the, put it off till the second meeting in uh, or first meeting in May and uh, and let's take a look at it then. It'll give us more time to think about it. Certainly, we've, we've, we've spent like, what? Thirty-five minutes on this right now? Um, and you got plenty of input, so. I backed out.
The motion failed.
It went away.
I don't know, he was pulling my leg, but.
Away, yeah, yeah, two, three.
Okay. All right, is everyone okay with that? I?
I am.
Yeah.
I think we're that, I mean, we've brought up a lot of points that we probably all need to digest and look at, and certainly for poor Heidi.
Well, maybe, maybe, Mayor, maybe. Wait a minute, just, just one more, so you add to your uh, your, your array here. Um, the 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 five, six businesses that are going in by Barry's Cleaners right now. What are we doing there?
They have parking.
Where?
They have parking in the back, right, William?
That, that, that project on Barry's Cleaners has fifteen new parking spaces that weren't there before.
No, there's a lot of misinformation on that because they have.
There are six going in the, on in the back of the building and nine along the Hook Square uh, alley. Fifteen. I sent you the email with.
Yeah, 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 I know, but I don't, I don't, I just, I just can't envision the fifteen, I.
Yeah, that, that, that property, believe it or not, never had any aside.
I know.
On-site parking at all.
The port of cachet.
It was that drive-through uh, that people use as parking because there was no parking in the building, but now they closed that off and they're creating fifteen new parking spaces.
Okay.
I stand corrected. Nine of them are along the Hook Square Alley.
Uh, uh.
Nine are.
Only on the Hook Square Alley and six are in the back.
Fifteen, yes.
Okay, um.
Was there a site plan of that in the email from the architect?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go back and look at it.
I sent you the package, I think. Uh, the architect is Manny Perez from Southeast Design.
Southeast Design, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, any, have I missed any agenda item? I don't think so.
I think you got them all, Mayor.
All right, so um, no other business. We will move right along to our comments, reports, recommendations from our esteemed city attorney. And by the way, everyone, I met Mr. Pooh, who's also from the uh, Heidi's firm. Thank you so much for being here. He's helped, I know, I've seen so many emails back and forth on on throughout the years on on um, items that he's worked on. So thank you for being here for the whole meeting, too.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. How about the city manager?
We have on Thursday, uh, the twenty-eighth, we have Unite for Ukraine, which is hosted by the Girl Scout Troop eighteen fifty-seven in partnership with the Women's Club and you can um, come by between the hours of nine and ten and donate um, any uh, needed items such as baby beat items et cetera. Turn, and then you also can turn in your unused and expired medicine for safe disposal on Saturday, April thirtieth from ten to two at the Community Pressing Office. Also, April thirtieth, you can help um, the Boy Scouts with their summer camp, uh, as council did. But uh, residents are able to do that from eight to two at the Miami Springs VG Optimist Club, which is hosted by the uh, Boy Scouts Troop three, three, four, from nine to two with uh, they'll be holding a rummage sale and a car wash. And then also I want to remind you about the Sebastian Strong Events that will be happening on Saturday, May fourteenth for the uh, run and um, the evening event, which is the at the brewery, the craft uh, craft beer at the brewery of the tank. And then the Women's Club is having a Mother's Day celebration, Queen for a Day on Saturday, May seventh at eleven A M. Uh, and then again at three-thirty at the Women's Club and tickets are on sale on Instagram on their Instagram page at Women, uh, sorry, at Miami Springs Women's Club.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, um, let's start on this end with Councilman Fajad, I mean, Councilman Vasquez, I'm sorry.
Sure, I'm going to be brief, but uh, by the way, just to, on the Women's Club, uh, my wife has already picked up her, uh, what she's wearing those days. Um, outfit. Just two things, uh, Madam Mayor, I attended the Education Advisory Board Meeting on Tuesday. Um, Dr. Fajad was there too with his uh, a, at the A P of the A I E school and uh, uh, Springs Elementary, Middle and High School. Um, and and they had just started meeting, they had one previous meeting I was not able to attend. Um, and I, and I um, appreciated so much. Uh, the the information that was presented, the reports, the quality, uh, if they had quorum, but there were only three of them there. My, what my appointee was sick that day. Uh, but but uh, you know, at the end, they asked if I'm going to say a few words and I just, basically, I thank them. Um, you know, understanding that, uh, you know, people work jobs and in long days and how much we appreciate them and and their, uh, you know, their participation in um, the setting of an education advisory board. What I would like to recommend, they have one more meeting coming up in May uh, because they're going to break for the summer. In fact, they're going to come up with a, a more flexible schedule and because summer, a lot of folks are not, uh, you know, uh, you know, schools are running, but you know, their their schedules changed. That we invite them to one of our June meetings to provide a report. I think they came up with some really interesting ideas, recommendations. I like the fact that uh, and I support this, the fact that they talked about how the city council could support um, um, uh, you know, activities and things at the schools, understanding that uh, schools are, you know, they're run, you know, they 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 have a different operation with the, with the school board, with the Miami-Dade County Public Schools, but uh, that's some ideas about how we might be able to support them in 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 number of endeavors and recognitions and things of that nature. So I I'd like to respectfully request that we we invite them one of the June meetings and and just where we can hear, um, you know, over the couple of meetings that they've had uh, some reports, some excellent reports uh, from all four schools that were there, the the three public schools and and A I E, they were, you know, was, it was just really, really moving to hear them. Um, the second uh, thing I'd like to say, and this is just a short, I, uh, just an idea, I'm not going to, I'm not going to elaborate on this, but I got to thinking uh, that uh, we are uh, probably one of the, one of the top cities in the county, in the county in recognizing veterans. It's coming soon, is is Memorial Day, where of course we we remember those who lost their lives in the service to our country. And then Veterans Day, in which we celebrate all veterans, people who ever wore the uniform. But I attended an event in January, I think it was, and I got to thinking about it because I ran into Marie Bella, who's one of the members of the Girl Scout Troops, whose daughter is at the Naval Academy. And and after watching those families in that event in January, the the event was for families of active-duty military. Right, and how they could be supported. And I thought, I asked her and I thought, I talked to Connie Rodriguez. You know, how many families do we have in Miami Springs who actually have uh, family members that are serving right now? Some of them overseas, not necessarily, but uh, point being is that that family member is away serving our country. And 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 I'd like to see how we can maybe support uh, in some way, one idea that kind. One idea that Connie gave me this morning is, you know, maybe a pool day for the kids of those families and some something special. So just an idea, I haven't totally percolated, but it's another way to recognize our men and women in the armed services who are actually serving. Right? And their families. So and then lastly, some of you may have seen on Facebook, my daughter Sophia graduated from Miami-Dade College with a bachelor of applied science in business. And 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 hopefully, we were talking this morning, will be pursuing a master's degree in the M B A program in Business Administration Hospitality Management, which is her field at F I U at the Biscayne Campus, so. Short and sweet today.
Vice Mayor?
No, just don't have anything, anything to report. Just thank you guys for the work that you invest in the in in trying to help us make the best decisions for the city. Thank you.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Bravo?
Just one little thing. I know that we are getting the Architectural Review Board together. I just wanted to see where we are in that. I know we've received some applications or if we're going to appoint anybody because I really wanted, I want to see if we we get them together sooner than later to review what we've requested. But other than that, no, I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
The best for last.
Just just three brief things. Gosh, it's almost ten o'clock. Look at that. Anyway, good, good, good discussions tonight, all of you, though. I I really enjoyed it all, every bit of it. Three things. One, thanks for bringing up F I U because that's my first point. They asked me to do a game for the high school varsity baseball team last Thursday down at F I U at the stadium at the facility there. So it was pretty cool. You know, announcing the ballgame from the press box and stuff and 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 I don't know. But they lost eight to two. I mean, you you can't win a ballgame with three hits unless all are home runs and you got superlative pitching. That's the only way you win it. Yeah, when you get three hits, but so they're going to have to work on that. They're seventeen and four now. They got a regular season game Wednesday night, which we'll be doing here on Dove. And then they go into the week after that, next week, they go into the districts. And if they win that, then the regionals, and if they are fortunate enough to get through all of that, they go to the to the left coast in Fort Myers for the States. So which which they did three years ago. So that's that. Secondly, a nice event the other night at the at the Senior Center. It was the Pioneer Dinner hosted by the Starco Society. And really well, well, well done, well laid out. I know the mayor and 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 her husband was there and my wife and I and and several others, very well done. And the facility is just absolutely dynamite. It's yeah, what can I say? Talk about a nice mural, Mayor, in times two inside, inside now, mind you, yes. And finally, they had a very nice ceremony for my good friend Fred Drouillard, who passed away recently at the Lions yesterday. There must have been two hundred, two hundred twenty-five people there. Victor and I were there and and it was very well handled. The Lions really know how to send their own off. I'll tell you, it was it was a tearjerker. Very well done.
Particularly for his family.
For his family, yeah, there was people, his his brothers were there from what, Port Charlotte and I think Chapel Hill, North Carolina. So they all were in town for that, but we lost a good guy, lost a good resident Miami Springs and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. I just wanted to mention, well, that in April, well, first of all, that I think it's very fitting that we're passing the ordinance or we had the the first reading of the ordinance on you know, making our city just our intent to be more environmentally responsible. You know, the city asking our residents and businesses to do that since April is Earth Day or Earth Month, depending on how you want to look at it. And then the other thing is just to mention that earlier this month was the one-year anniversary of our council being here and to thank you all. It's a pleasure and an honor to serve with each and every one of you here. I know we don't always agree on things, which is why we're a council. I think we all value each other's input highly and, you know, and are willing to listen and it's just a pleasure and an honor to serve with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And with that, it's adjourned.
Yes, sir. Okay, no, just leave it there in the sink. We'll take care of it. Good night, everyone. Oh, hi. Nice to meet you. Yes.